Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, February 7, 2022. This is Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan.
Yes.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
Eric Helmut?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Meyer is participating remotely. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with an act signed into law on June 16, 2021, that extends certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The act includes an extension until April 1, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The governor's order, which is referenced with Agenda Materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials, also found on the town's website, using the Novus Agenda platform. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. We have seventeen items on the board's agenda this evening. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. I'll now turn to the next item on the agenda, item two. To review and approve bond issue, bond anticipation note and related matters. Comes in three parts. Part A, determination of maximum useful life of capital asset to be financed. Award sale of the $82,445,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds dated February 24, 2022 to JP Morgan LLC at the net interest rate of 2.416%, and see all related documents required to execute the sale. Joining us for this agenda item is our town treasurer, Phyllis Marshall. Good evening, Ms. Marshall.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to start by pointing out that we had the AAA bond rating reaffirmed again. And so it's a great moment for us, and I appreciate the teamwork that went into getting that affirmation. We sold the bonds, and there were seven bids. They were all very, very close. The winning bid was a rate of 2.416%, and the range of bid, the highest bid was 2.639. So they're very, very tight, and that's always a good indicator that you have a good market and a good competitive bid. This issue includes $75 million for the next step of the high school and as well as $11.2 million for the DPW facility. We borrowed $21.5 last time for the DPW. So there are also some other projects that were included in the annual town meeting vote last year. Those include the engineering study for buildings in the school district, school bus, Windmore Park improvements, and a dump truck for the DPW, which we're going to vote on next, and also for the apartment or exterior improvements. So if you have any questions of me, that'd be great. I'd like to hear them. And I would ask for your favorable consideration of this sale of bond.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I'll turn it to the board for any questions or comments, and I'll start with Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move approval of the sale of the bonds. And I have one quick question for the treasurer through you. And that is, we will see something similar next year at this time, right?
Yes.
So I'll save my question for next year. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I happily second that. Appreciate, as always, the fine work by our finance department and leadership for that bond rating, which is so important to making this feasible for us. Thanks for your good work. No questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick question. I'd like to ask Ms. Marshall if she knows. Is the town, yeah, it's down, oh my lord, is the town still on track for fully funding contributory retirement by 2035?
Yes, I believe so. I think that was...
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, that was shared with the Standard and Poor's when we spoke with them.
Okay, and we have till 2040 to do it, so we're still on track for finishing five years early. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
I'm happy to support it. No questions. Just say that, you know, it's nice to drive by the new high school. Every time you drive by, it seems to be huge chunks of it that is done that wasn't done before. So this is one bond issue that we could certainly drive down the street and see the benefits of what we're voting on. Appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Marshall, for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And yeah, I also will support this, and I do want to congratulate you on the AAA bond rating. Congratulations to town manager and the entire team for that. That's great news. Just a question for you or for Attorney Heim. Is it just one vote that we have to take to approve the sale? We have the motion to approve the sale of the bonds. Is there any other motions that we need on this one? Okay, all right. So just the one motion. So on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut, Attorney Heim.
Just to be clear for the record for anybody, Ms. Marshall was indicating no, and I agree with that assessment. Okay, on the motion, Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Unanimous vote?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much, and the team, the finance team, thanks.
Okay, item three this evening is the fiscal 2022 second quarter financial report. Sandy Poole, deputy town manager, Eda Cody, comptroller.
They should both be joining us.
See, Mr. Poole. Good evening, Mr. Poole.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me and Eda here tonight. Tonight, I will be presenting the second quarter report. Eda and I have gotten into a little rhythm here where we switch off which of us actually does the presentation. Last time it was Eda, so she gets the odd quarters and I get the even quarters. See what we can do with that. All right, so we are halfway through the year, which means we should be at spending and revenue rates of 50%. Overall, I would just say that you don't have any budgetary problems with their spending. I think we're all in line. Some of the departments have spent over 50%, but that is for explainable reasons and is consistent with their operations in previous years. Some of our revenue, most of our revenue is at or above 50%, and there are some that are slightly lagging that, but again, it's consistent with what we've seen in the past. In this memo, Ed and I outline and call out expenses that are at or above 60% of budget today. In other words, when there's more than a 10% variance from where we should be this time of year. And you can see these all listed in the memo. I think unlike in the past, I don't think I'll go through each one except to say that overall there have been faster expenses from some departments because of the way they do business, such as encumbering large costs in IT or DPW for their software or for their trash collections at the beginning of the year. Same thing for facilities, as they encumber a lot of their utility and repair accounts. The bottom one on this first page is the Health Department, where it's expended 70% of its budget. Some of that comes from prepaying its mosquito control expenses, but a lot of it comes from the department having a substantial number of COVID-related expenses that will be reimbursed by various sources, some of which we've undertaken as reimbursing Health Department already in January. Others, we still need to apply for things like FEMA reimbursement. It is one of the few departments that still has substantial COVID expenses in its operating budget on the general fund side. So that's why I wanted to call that one out. And then Finance Council on Aging, they made a big rent payment upfront in the beginning of the year, so that was why that's higher. Our other expenses, debt, our minute man assessments, pension, and our insurance, again, all fall when those costs are due. Debt, we traditionally sold a lot of our debt in Decembers in years past. We now sell most of it in February, but from our old debt, a lot of it still shows up in the first half of the year. The minute man payment is made in accordance with an agreement we have, and the regional agreement says by this time of year, we have to have paid out 60% of what we owe. Pensions, we always pay at the beginning of the year, and liability insurance, we pay a lot of that upfront, too. That's the expense side. On the revenue side, our collections are still strong. We're just under 50% in taxes, which is normal for this time of year because the first two real estate taxes are estimated bills, the second two are actual bills, and they tend to become a little higher when we finally have the actuals. Motor vehicle excise is actually a little higher this year than it has been other years. We still have not put out our biggest motor vehicle excise tax bill, and we'll expect to see that in the third quarter. All the other things are coming in, I think, right on target. Our biggest local receipt after motor vehicle excise or license and permits, and we've already collected 93% of those. Our hotel tax is coming in at 110% of what we estimated, so we find that positive. And meals taxes are coming in strong. Both hotel and motel tax, we still have lower than usual estimates from previous years, where we bring those up over time. Marijuana taxes at 72%, that's been a strong collection rate for us. It's a nice new source of revenue. So we're working in that. Investment earnings are down below where we'd like to see them. Right now, we have 25% of our estimated revenue in. Part of that is because we don't have November or December's interest in yet. It takes a while. There's always a lag with earnings on investment as the bank accounts come in, and then the treasurer's office has to distribute those investment earnings out to various funds. I would say overall, this is something that we're keeping a close eye on because it is even accounting for that shortfall in November and December. I think that they are falling behind what they've been in previous years. I'm going to move on to the enterprise funds. Water and sewer, we've expended 57% of the budget and collected 54% of our revenue. This has been a wet year, so people have used less water. So we are lagging in our revenue. So it will be important as we go into the next revenue year to make sure that we get those rates filed and enacted on a timely basis, as the board has done very well for the last couple of years. There is a substantial fund balance in the modern sort of funds, so I'm not worried about its overall performance, but it is just notable that our collection is lagging a little bit. The other funds are doing well. AYCC is spending and collecting about equal rates. Sewway transportation is also not transporting as many people as it has when the senior center's been open. Expect that to rebound once it does open, but on a financial basis, they're doing well. The Rink has expended 68% of its budget and collected 31%. I've looked back on several past years. This is a normal collection rate because they collect a lot. I mean, they collect all the revenue in the winter, and even in January, I looked, and they've already started bringing substantial revenue in January. So I've looked at it. I talked to Joe Connolly, the Rink director, about it. I think they're on target, and I'm not worried about that. In a similar way, the recreation budget has this sort of funny phenomenon where it spends a lot of money in the summer covering summer programs where the revenue from that came in the previous year in the spring. So we always have upfront a lot of spending. Revenue tends to come in during the year and then have a big revenue hit in the spring as we collect summer revenue. So again, we've looked at this comparing it to previous years. I've talked to Joe Connolly about it. He does his own forecasts, and we've compared notes. And so I think Recreation Fund will be in good shape. They've certainly been very active this year. And so I think we've been happy with that. I think those are the major things we've seen in the budget. You can see the numbers. We do produce this every quarter for the Select Board and send it to the Finance Committee. These are the numbers, department by department, for spending. The next group down are the big others. They're transfers, reserve fund assessments. Next are warrant articles, and I put in budgets here, the original budgets as voted at town meeting without the sort of carryover that we usually allow, which you will see on the municipal report. We allow the warrant articles to kind of carry over two years of budget at a time because they are run by citizens, and as I said before, sometimes it takes them a little while to process their payments. But I think we're certainly on track for all of that. And then you'll see the numbers for our revenue. And again, everything is pretty much on track there. Then finally, you just see the summation of the numbers for the enterprise funds. And you see the total expenses and encumbrances, which we then total together for the percent used. We break down revenue into direct revenue from fees and then any transfers, such as in the water fund, the $1.8 million in subsidy from the general fund. This will be the last year you're going to see that. That all goes away in accordance with policy that the board voted. But again, I think we feel pretty comfortable about all of our numbers. So having said all that, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or Eda would be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. I would just ask Ed if there's anything at this point you would like to add.
Hi, good evening. Oops. No, not much to add. Actually, Sandy covered everything. Just two things I want to mention. The interest, like Sandy said, we haven't posted it yet because we had a bank takeover. Eastern took over Century, so the treasurer wanted to make sure that all accounts are unbalanced before they post the interest. So we need to do a thorough reconciliation before we post this two months. Also, we still have about $135,000 in Health and Human Services that are related to a vaccine and testing, and we're hoping to recoup these amounts from FEMA and from ARPA. And finally, we received the last tranche of CARES money, and that completes the CARES allocation from the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Thank you, Ms. Cody. And before I turn to board members, I want to congratulate Ms. Cody. Mrs. Mahan and I are on the Audit Committee, and we attended a meeting, I think, since the last time that we saw you. And the audit for last year's financial statements came back with a clean opinion and really strong comments from the outside auditors. So congratulations to you and your team and to the whole finance team for that. That was great news for us to receive. So I will start with board members, and I will turn to Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. You know, I should know this is my second one, but do we do a motion for receipt on these?
Yes.
Then I will happily move receipt. I thought that was such a fantastic presentation, and I have no questions. Thanks for your good work.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will definitely second my colleague, Mr. Helmut's motion to receive. And the only question I have pretty much has been answered, but it was on the earnings on investments. My question was, you know, why haven't we posted November, December? And Ms. Cody, along with Mr. Poole's report, just explained with the change in banks and wanting to take the time.
I'm a little trouble hearing you, Mrs. Mahan, with the connection.
I think we lost her. She's frozen.
Okay.
It's for me.
Oh, yeah, I'll return to Mrs. Mahan in a moment. We lost her connection, and I'll turn to Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Cody and Mr. Poole. You know, I do always enjoy these presentations. I'm glad we were able to institute this as a regular occurrence quarterly. Seems like they come up a lot more than quarterly, but just, I guess, we look forward to them so much. But we have a lot of budgets to go through tonight, but I want to thank you for your presentation and your continued work.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I'll return to, I think we have Mrs. Mahan back, so we'll return to Mrs. Mahan.
Actually, I'm going to follow up with Mr. Poole or Ms. Cody tomorrow on my questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just need some really short questions because every time we go through this, I just see new things, you know, or sometimes they are apparent to me because of conversations that I've had with residents. Hey, display of flags. I see that we haven't spent anything. Is that because of the pandemic? Do we normally spend money on flags about this time of year? Or the other part of the question is, is that kind of backloaded, meaning like we start spending them around Patriots' Day? It's in the warrant articles.
I'm fairly, if I may, Mr. Chair. I'm fairly certain from conversations I've had with Mr. Chunglo that most of those expenditures come around Memorial Day.
Yeah.
So I believe that's when you'll start to see expenditures from that fund.
Got you. Got you. I'm a little concerned about ACAC. So, I mean, I didn't look at the muni part. So you had mentioned that you allow some of the entities to, you know, have two years, not roll one year into the next. I mean, so I hope they're not in as much trouble as it looks like be from 94%.
No, I don't think they're in trouble. I just think... Which one were you looking at there?
Arts and Culture.
Oh, no, I think it's just... There, I've shown the original budget at 30,000 because that's what you're used to seeing in the warrant, but the spending could be both from that 30,000 from this year and some other money from previous year.
Okay.
So I think they're fine.
All right. Please, go ahead.
I just want to add that typically, we look at when they get the appropriation, and if the money is not spent within two years, then it has to go back to the free cash. But most of the times, they spend it over two years.
Got you. Got you. So I don't think I've asked this question before. What's reclassification?
Also, there's an article that when people have their positions changed, in other words, they move from one position to another, they are reclassed, and that requires a vote of town meeting. There's an initial appropriation with that article at the time that people are changing their positions, and then we incorporate those dollar changes into the department's budgets going forward.
So if I ask this question again, just tell me, go back and look at the video. Okay? And the last question is on the fees. I mean, they are high, you know, you said the highest in 10 years. Just from your experience, are those a predictor of anything, you think? I mean, you said that they are associated with building permits and all. Do you think they are predictive of anything?
I think the inspections department has been doing a very good job of doing their fundamental work. They've also instituted a policy of requiring contractors to sign affidavits affirming the true cost of projects, and I think that has probably made the fees that we take in be a little bit higher because the numbers are more accurate.
All right, all right. I remember that from last time. So I think Mr. Jameson will be pleased. So thank you very much. Well done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and thank you again for the presentation this evening. Just a quick question. You touched on it, on the reimbursements for COVID expenses, and you mentioned several departments. I know it's the Health Department. What other departments might see reimbursement, whether it's CARES Act theme or ARPA funding?
Some of the department, we have some expenses that we have already classed in the School Department. We also had in the, some capital projects that we reclassified. We had in Council on Aging and some expenses in Recreation as well. And we also, in the Town Manager, we had some reimbursements for Zoom calls, for example, for the Zoom membership.
Okay, but that level of detail is all in the backup materials, and there's a line in each department for COVID expenses. But Eda had it exactly right as to those departments where they're likely to find them.
Great, great. Thank you very much again for the presentation. We look forward to seeing you after the third quarter. And so on a motion by Mr. Helmut to receive, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both. Moving on, item four, fiscal year 2023 Town Manager's Budget Presentation. Turn it over to Mr. Chapdeline for that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep Sandy here as he may be able to assist me with any questions the board may have. And I have a quick slide deck that I'll run through, but I want to start by thanking Sandy, Julie Wayman, the whole financial team, and really all the department heads and staff for helping us put together this budget. It is a long, very team-oriented process, and we're lucky to work with a good team. And specifically this year, I want to call out that Sandy made the decision to empower Julie Wayman, the management analyst in our office, to really be the leader of developing this budget, working with department heads, developing all the documents. So everything you see in the documents is a credit to Julie and the good work that she's been doing for the organization. So I wanted to publicly share that so everybody knew what an important role Julie was playing. With that, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So I want to take this opportunity, hopefully take about 10 minutes or so, to talk a little bit about the fiscal 2023 budget proposal, which was submitted to the board and to the Finance Committee on January 15th per the Town Manager Act. And then will start being heard by the Finance Committee in late up the town meeting over the course of the next several months. If I can get this to advance. So in overview of what I'm going to talk about, I want to highlight the process that we go through, both internally and then externally, to both develop and request consideration and hopefully approval of the budget. I want to give an overview of both projected revenues and expenditures or budgeted expenditures for the FY '23 budget. I want to share some highlights, talking about the board continuing to maintain its commitments as part of this four-year, long-range plan that we're currently in, and really highlight that this is a level services budget, budget with very few, with a handful of targeted investments. Talk a little bit about the continuing long-term outlook of the town's finances and then next steps for this budget. So to talk a little bit about the budget process, it's really a year-round process. For those who don't know, the town's fiscal year begins every year on July 1st. So our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30. So you can see that's when we start our budget year. Fast forwarding to September, we send out a memorandum in August asking that capital budget requests be sent into the Town Manager's Office in September. In November, we expect the same of the operating budgets. And on top of that, we have those requests submitted, and then we meet with each individual department to go over their budget requests as we formulate the actual budget proposals. As I mentioned, in January, on the 15th, we provide the budget books to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Starting in late January or into February, all the way through April, the Finance Committee holds public hearings on the budget. In March, the Town Manager's Office produces the financial plan and share that with the Select Board and Finance Committee. Usually by the end of March, that's the more robust document that carries both performance metrics, goals and objectives for each department's organizational charts, as well as proposed budgetary figures. Next, in April, the Finance Committee report is submitted to town meeting for consideration at the annual town meeting. In May, if we're fortunate, town meeting will adopt the operating and capital budgets. And then the fiscal year closes on June 30th, and it all starts again. So as I said, it's really a 12-month cycle of preparing and managing, preparing and managing the budget throughout the year. So let's talk a little bit about what the FY '23 budget looks like from, again, a revenue projection point of view and then an expenditure projection point of view. So what you see on the screen right here are our revenue projections. And this is really a snapshot of what I think most of you have seen also in the town's long-range planning document, where we conservatively budget revenues and then control our expenditures as best possible with spending caps on our discretionary expenditure areas. So this year, you see between FY '22 and '23, an increase of property tax going up by about 1.5%. Normally, it grows between about 2.5 and 3%, but this year is the last year that we're reducing the MWRA debt shift, as Sandy mentioned earlier. And that's why when that 1.8 million is taken out of the tax levy, you don't see the same year-over-year growth as you might expect. Local receipts, that's, again, this is great, great lead-in with Sandy's presentation, that those are all the non-tax revenues we collect, motor vehicle size, building permit fees, and everything else he described. You see a projected growth of $352,000, about 4%. That's a little more than we budget on an ongoing basis for an increase, but we're still catching up from where we saw revenues slide during the pandemic. So as we see revenues rebound, we're budgeting that rebound accordingly. State aid, primarily what's in that state aid line is Chapter 70, which is education aid from the state, as well as unrestricted general government aid or UGA, which frankly feels ridiculous to say, but that's, that's the acronym chosen by the state. The budget that you all had submitted to you showed just about a 1% growth in state aid. However, after the budget submission on January 15th, the governor released his budget in which there were larger increases to both Chapter 70 than what we had budgeted, as well as larger increases to unrestricted general government aid. We're going to continue to advocate with our state legislators for even larger increases, especially for UGA. But for right now, we've updated figures to represent the governor's budget. Below that, you see ARPA funds budgeted. As I believe we've mentioned at several past Select Board meetings, changes in the federal rules are going to allow us to use up to $10 million total for revenue loss from the town's ARPA allocation. So we've planned to program $5 million of that as a revenue in FY '23. And then in future documents, you would see another $5 million for FY '24. Below that, you see free cash. Free cash, as we often joke, is neither free nor cash. It's really the town's operating surplus at the end of every year. Whatever we collect in excess revenue or don't spend for budgeted amounts rolls into the town's free cash. And the town's longstanding financial policy has been to use 50% of the prior year's certified free cash as an operating revenue. So that $5.5 million figure you see is exactly half of the free cashes was certified this year. Other funds, that $400,000 amount is actually overlay surplus. So each year, we ask the assessors to identify what they can give back to the town from their overlay account. And for this year, we are budgeting the same as last year, $400,000. And then finally, you see the override stabilization fund. At the start of our long-range plans, we're making deposits into the override stabilization fund. At the end of long-range plans, we're making withdrawals from the override stabilization fund. So you can see in this instance, both last year and FY '22, again, and FY '23, we're making a withdrawal from the override stabilization fund, perfectly within the plan and what we expected to happen when the, when the long-range plan was set in place back in FY '19. And then one more thing I'll note, below that, you see what's called transfers and offsets. Those are the funds that we take from the enterprise funds to offset general fund costs associated with the work that general fund departments put forth in supporting those enterprise funds. Moving forward for expenditures, you can see we have broken it down to a number of categories. Municipal departments, we have, I believe, there's incorporated in there the elections. What am I looking at there? Oh, excuse me, sorry. See, municipal departments appropriations, offset by that same figure of the water sewer offset costs for a municipal department's total of just about $40 million, growing at 3% for FY '23. Previously, as part of the long-range plan, we were allowed to grow at 3.25%, but we have limited growth this year to 3% as we try to best prepare for the override, which is still to be considered for FY '24 and beyond. For the school department, after a long series of discussions with the Long Range Planning Committee, which includes school committee members and members of the school administration, we are proposing in this budget a 5.42% increase in the school department. We have taken a look at enrollment. Over the past couple of years, we've tracked both enrollment increases and now enrollment decreases. And after resetting the base based on the school department's actual enrollment, funding the strategic plan that's been set forth by the school committee, funding COVID remediation funds, increasing general, excuse me, general education spending by 3.5%. Special education by 7%. We reach a cumulative year-over-year increase for the school department of 5.42%, which, when you're limited by Proposition 2.5, is a very robust increase for the school department budget for FY '23. Below that, we see the Minuteman School, going up by a very significant percentage. That's really driven by two factors. One is increases in the debt service associated with the new building that is still rolling on, as well as larger-than- previously-expected enrollment figures for Arlington students at the Minuteman School. Pensions and healthcare are next. You see that's collectively going up by 6.25% next year. You see the capital budget, which includes debt service, even exempt debt service for the high school and other debt-excluded projects. You see the MWRA debt shift being zeroed out. You see the warrant articles, with which the lion's share of that are the funds that we deposit into the OPEB or the Retiree Healthcare Trust Fund. You see our operating reserve fund, which we mostly set aside to cover snow and ice cost overages that aren't budgeted within the DPW budget. And then you see the override stabilization fund deposit, which, again, this year, we're not projecting in FY '23 to make a deposit. I should, I want to just quickly note, actually, go back. You see a deposit there into the override stabilization fund. Those are actually funds that we set aside last year in case school enrollment rebounded far beyond levels that we expected. It has not. So those funds that we set aside at this upcoming spring town meeting will be asking to put into the override stabilization fund so that they can drive the budget in years ahead. So I mentioned that I wanted to touch on maintaining the board's override commitments. There's a series of commitments that I know board members are aware of when the override was put on the ballot a number of years ago. I think they're all maintained. I know they're all maintained through the recommendation of this budget. We're continuing to exercise fiscal discipline while maintaining services across all departments. The budget maintains the investments that were committed to as part of building Arlington's future. Those are the high school project, the strategic, strategic plan funded by the school committee, $200,000 a year being put towards mobility and $50,000 a year being put towards senior transportation. There's separate actions that this board has taken to try to minimize the impact of the tax rate on seniors. So it's not part of this budget, but it is an ongoing process, and many of the actions that have been adopted by town meeting are now in effect. And also, this budget maintains the board's commitment of keeping at least, and it's actually significantly beyond a 5% financial reserve for the duration of the four-year plan. So what's contained in this budget? Like I said before, this is almost entirely level services budget. We received a significant amount of requests from departments, which I think is an honest reflection of need that they see in the community. But because of our desire to control costs and stay within, stay within the lines of the long-range plan, we really were only able to fund very targeted investments. The first one, and the biggest one, was being able to sign a three-year extension for our recycling and trash contract. There's been years of concern as recycling markets have sort of been topsy-turvy with the recycling market in China collapsing a number of years ago, that we could have a very, very significant increase in our recycling and trash costs when we renew. We were seeing, we currently pay $0 per ton of recycling. We were seeing communities, such as even Boston, agreeing to contracts, paying over $100 a ton for recycling. And we generally produce about 6,500 tons of recycling a year. So just orders of magnitude, we were, we were girding for what could have been a half a million dollar or more budgetary impact when we renewed. Fortunately, due to the real excellent diligence of Charlotte Milan, the recycling coordinator, and DPW Director Mike Rodamacher, they've been able to, they've been able to negotiate a renewal with JRM again for three years. The first year grows at 9%, which is not insignificant, but far smaller than the figures we were concerned it would grow by during those more tumultuous times in the recycling market. And then in years two and three, grow by 2.5%, which is very manageable within the confines of the long-range plan. We're also planning to make an investment in DPW modernization through the establishment of a systems analyst, GIS director position in the DPW department. It'll be a position very similar to the one once filled by Adam Krawski. But that position in IT has been transitioned to a project manager position. So we've now decided to program that position in DPW to really give them the tools they need to begin modernizing some of their systems. We're making a targeted investment in accessibility. What we've proposed to do is enhance the existing DEI administrative assistant position to serve as a full ADA coordinator, to both work with Jill Harvey as the Director of DEI and work with the Disability Commission to advance accessibility initiatives across town. And then finally, we've proposed making an investment in regulatory support by enhancing the existing ZBA staff position to create a full-time position as opposed to a part-time position that can really meet both the technical and administrative needs of both the zoning board of appeals and the Arlington Historical Commission. So where does that leave us looking forward? We, we have maintained the four-year plan. The override, which was in 2009, went into effect, 2019, excuse me, went into effect in FY '20, projects to last through FY '23, as had been planned. So there are early discussions about what a potential override would look like in FY '24, already occurring at the Long Range Planning Committee. In this budget, we continue to invest in both our pension and OPEB liabilities, as Mrs. Mahan actually asked during the prior presentation. We continue to monitor enrollment in the school department. As mentioned earlier, it has dipped in past years, but is projecting to rebound. So we want to make sure that this plan acknowledges that, or the long-range plan acknowledges that, and it does. And we're going to continue to need to advocate for new and varied revenue sources from the state, whether it be our home rule petition for a D's excise fee, for increased UGA, increased Chapter 70, or maybe even in the future, some local option taxes for consideration. We think if there's any chance of us minimizing our structural deficit, we're going to need to continue that advocacy. So where do we go from here? We have further long-range planning meetings and a budget and revenue task force scheduled for February and March. Hearings with the Finance Committee actually beginning, I believe, tonight. So we're very timely in that regard. The Group Insurance Commission is going to set its rate at its March 3 meeting, and once we get those rates, we'll be able to finalize our health insurance spending for next year. And then all of these figures will be updated in coordination with the Finance Committee in preparation for town meeting and presentation of a budget in April. So with that, I think I went a little longer than I probably expected, but I'll close my presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. I'll turn it over to board members for questions. I'll start with Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I heard from the town manager a motion to approve the town's budget submission, or just receive?
I think receive is appropriate at this point.
Okay. All right. We'll receive first off. And a lot of my questions, I've had the opportunity to under long-range planning, as well as looking forward to the Budget Revenue Task Force that the chairman will be. If I still have a cable connection, in terms of, I don't know if it was 1.4 or 1.6 under enrollment that the manager spoke about, is that something that can be done at the regular town meeting or a special town?
So I actually spoke with town council, and so just to be clear, you're asking about the enrollment set aside, moving that back into the override stabilization fund. So I actually talked to the town council about that today, and we did agree we should be able to do that within the annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I'm Mr. Heard.
Thank you. Happy to second that. Thank you for the presentation. You did touch on a number of my questions during the presentation. You mentioned the, the senior circuit breaker and increased eligibility for the property tax deferral program. Have we seen the past year or so an increase in participation, or has it leveled off? Does it seem like the war is getting out there to seniors that these programs are available to them?
So, you know, if Phyllis was still here, I would actually ask her what she has seen for deferrals. Sandy, do you have a sense? Do you mind, Mr. Chair, if I pitch to Sandy to see if he has a sense?
Yeah, that's no problem. And I certainly could follow up if you don't have the answer in front of you. I'm just sort of generally to see if, I mean, we're doing our job to let people know that that is out there.
I know that they have implemented the new higher tax deferral numbers. I don't know what the, what the participation levels are. We can certainly find that out for you. And the circuit breaker is still, has not been implemented, because there was some concerns about its interaction with what the state was doing. I think the state just moved to increase the circuit breaker amount. And so.
All right. Thank you. And then we talked a little bit about the enrollment growth. Mr. Chaplin, has it been steady over the past, I assume, you know, last year is when you saw the major drop-off? And then has it increased at all, or is it still steady from where it was in 2020?
So as you said, there was a significant drop-off the first year of the pandemic.
Yeah.
And then for this school year, there was a rebound, but they did not even rebound to the level of the pre-pandemic. There's still, there's still 189, is that the right number, Sandy? So there's still, there's still 189, is that the right number Sandy? 189 students less than they were before the pandemic.
Okay, I assume it'll go up. I was just curious to see if there's a more lasting effect where some people transferred out and like where they were. And it would level off a little bit, but only time will tell with that. Um, then, uh, the projections for revenue for the hotel meals tax, where are those relative to pre-COVID projections? As far as a percentage, I know with each year since over the past couple, we put them down, we set it lower and we're increasing it bit by bit. But are we still 50% below pre-COVID, 25%, 75%?
I think we're getting back up to almost full uh, pre-COVID budgets with, with our increase of that, you know, catching back up to that, with that $350,000 amount, but. Yep, Sandy, it, it appears as though you're, you're looking at something, Sandy, on your screen.
I'm, I'm looking at a spreadsheet here. So uh, over the past five years, we've averaged about $430,000 in um, meals taxes. And we set our meals tax revenue forecast at 410 for this year. Over uh, the last few five years, uh, we've averaged 354,000 in um, hotel tax. Uh, that has lagged more uh, in this year and last year. So we set the budgeted amount at 170,000 for this year. So uh, it's just the hotel tax, it's just taking a while to come back.
Thank you. Alright, and then the only lo- last question I had is, see the budget book that I had for fiscal year 2023, it had a contribution from stabilization fund of about 4.2 million. You know, it looked like in the presentation it was 3.1 million. Is that relative to the school set aside?
I think that's relative to the state aid change. So because we, because state aid went up as a revenue, we didn't need to take as much out of the override stabilization fund to balance the budget.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Uh, Mr. Diggs.
Sorry about that. I just needed to cough. I didn't think you all wanted to hear that. Uh, so um, first off, we, I, I want to say that um, um, elevating Ms. Wayman into the position of control in this process is what's called a no-brainer. I mean, uh, she is just so good. He'd, I had a chance of, uh, to work with her uh, uh, at the first uh, uh, virtual town meeting. He'd and, and uh, you know, her level of competence, um, i- is just really stellar. So I just kind of figured she was highly involved anyways, but congratulations to her on that. And also, uh, I appreciate the town manager pointing out the great work that Ms. Milan and um, uh, uh, and, and Mr. Rodamacher did on the, on the recycling. Because when I was um, running and sitting, had the ability to sit in on the long-range uh, um, planning meetings, me, which unfortunately, when you get elected, you can't do it because you're then, you know, it, it has an open meeting law issue, but those are really great meetings, you know, and I became aware of that problem then and, and it's just one of those like awful situations where, you know, you want to recycle, but then, you know, you get, we're seemingly penalized for it. I use that word loosely. I mean, so I'm really happy that they were able to, to um, um, help out with that. And, and I'll say to um, uh, Mr. Hurd's question about the um, the, the deferrals, I mean, um, it was at one of our civic engagement group meetings, me, one of participants said, he, and this is Aunt Gold, he just said that uh, a lot of seniors that he knows, I mean, that don't do the deferrals, it's not like they don't know about it. They just don't want to do it because they want to pass along, you know, as much value being uh, uh, of their property, I mean, to their kids, I mean, so, so it may be more than just people not knowing and, and that we may need, you know, well, maybe more. I don't know what to say beyond that. Uh, and third, I want to say, or maybe it's fourth, I mean, um, the group goes to the end. Uh, is, is that, uh, I, I applaud the spending on, on schools, you know, I mean, it was higher than, you know, the three and a half percent uh, or, or whatever, you know, we try to aim for. Uh, but, but yeah, taking care of the kids and educating the kids is, is the most important thing that we do. I mean, and, and, and having more kids, I mean, in order to, you know, have, just to help the species, I mean, is, is one of the things to do and and necessary, you know, I don't have kids, but I love kids, I mean, and, and every time I work or do something with Arlington kids, you know, I just feel so good, and that's particularly the case because I'm working with some on the study committee, me, for the using adult advisory group. So anything that we can do as a community, you know, to um, educate and, and provide more support uh, for our kids, I really applaud. And lastly is a question, uh, and that is, where is it that we can find on the website, the list of requests um, from the departments?
So I, I don't have that published, but I can, I can produce that and we could, we could put that into a, a postable format.
Okay, only if it doesn't take too much effort and, and, and at your convenience. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs. I'm Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. One is just a detail, and if you happen to have this off the top of your head, if you don't, that's fine, but you mentioned that, that the renewal that we got in from JRM, the first year was a 9% increase, which is a lot better. Do you can, do you have no, a rough dollar figure for what that represents um, up against, you know, the, the increase we were afraid of?
So that is approximately, I can just punch some quick numbers into here. It's approximately $225,000 overall increase, which is probably only about $180,000 more than we expected, because we, we would have expected a two or two and a half percent increase. Anyways, so it's probably, you know, if, in a good, best mid-case scenario, a third of the impact that we had feared.
Great, yeah, I mean, considering the recycling market, that's, that's some wizardry in that part of uh, Ms. Milan and Mr. Rodamacher, rest of the team, so that's uh, that's a big win. Um, my second question is, um, so I saw that the, the $5 million from ARPA for the general fund is, is in there. Where is that plugging in? I think specifically, um, you know, I don't see the obvious places where, you know, it didn't, we're not changing, um, or putting into the override stabilization fund or, or um, that doesn't appear to be changing what we're withdrawing from it. Is, at this point, do you see that 5 million having a direct or an indirect effect on the long-range plan and, and specifically the duration of, of our current four-year plan?
So I would say two primary things in response to that. One, directly to your question, it is extending, it's not extending the life of the long-range plan, it is decreasing the size of a future override.
Okay.
Because it is not, it's not enough. Well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. There's a, there's a chance, depending on how the budgets go, that an override wouldn't be absolutely necessary in FY24. And these funds are mostly the reason why that that would be the case. But as the town considered last time, part of the long-term math of an override is collecting it over a certain number of years because it's the, it's sort, it's the number of years at which you collect an override amount that really what is what drives or powers a long-range plan's longevity. So at least in terms of how I would say the long-range plan, uh, long-range planning committee has been thinking about it. It would, the, the, the 5 million in FY23 and using the 5 million in FY24 would be primarily used to reduce the amount of a future override. And then the second thing I would say is that when Sandy has run numbers based on federal treasury's model of how to calculate revenue replacement, when you look at from the start of the pandemic to the end of the ARPA period, and I know he's been sort of noodling with this model, we've lost about $10.4 million. So to some degree, our argument would be, is that if the pandemic had never happened, we would have collected some portion of these monies anyways. So I, I only share that as an argument for I, in general, we wouldn't want to use one-time funds for operating costs. But these are called revenue replacement costs for a reason, because it is literally replacing revenue that we would have otherwise collected if the pandemic didn't occur.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's, I'm glad I asked. That's, that's very illuminating. A- and finally, uh, I'll just pile on, you're absolutely smart to put Julie Wayman uh, in the lead of this project, because I have also worked with her a lot as well. And uh, we have a lot of talent in the town and she certainly uh, comes to mind on the shortlist there, so, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Again, I want to thank you again, Mr. Chaplin, for the budget presentation and, and for the public's benefit, there, there is a detailed budget message and detailed um, budget report within the town manager's website, and he goes through each one of the commitments that were made in fiscal 19, where we stand, and the breakdown of how the school budget, at least in his budget, has um, has grown or, or the projection for next year, because it is a combination of general education, special education, and the cumulative effect of, of, of enrollment. So thank you for that. And, and for those who want to look more, it's there and there's more detail. We've made different references to commitments and, and uh, there's a checklist in terms of how we're doing on the commitments within that. I find it very helpful um, to see that. And, and just briefly on, on Mr. Helmut's point on the um, what's happened with the $5 million. And when we go back to fiscal 19, when we had the override, the five-year plan that was in place at that time showed a significant deficit in fiscal 24. With this last rendition and, and changes that Mr. Poole and Mr. Chaplin have made to the numbers based on state aid estimates, there is now no deficit in fiscal 24. We may have to go out in fiscal 23, as Mr. Chaplin said, to get ahead for fiscal 25, but there's no deficit. The deficit begins in fiscal 25. Um, I just want to also say, Mr. Chaplin had referenced going forward, um, we will have a meeting of the budget and revenue task force, and I think Mrs. Mahan may be the only member of this board who has attended a budget and revenue task force meeting as a member of the select board. Mr. Hurd may have early in his tenure, but I know Mr. Diggs, Mr. Helmut, and I haven't. Um, that's an opportunity for us to meet with our legislative delegation, with the school committee, with finance committee, and we're looking to do that either the last week of February or first week of March, and um, Mr. Chaplin is going to work on that. We may do it before a select board meeting, but we may do it during the day as well. But we do want to talk about what's happening with local aid and, and the numbers that we see in the budget now or what the governor proposed. It doesn't mean that the House or Senate couldn't increase that, and we may want to bring that up at, at the meeting, but that's, that's the type of thing we'll be doing going forward. Long-range planning will be meeting afterwards, and, and uh, I just want to thank Mr. Chaplin, Mr. Poole, um, for the work that they're doing. Uh, Mrs. Mahan and I and other members of the long-range planning, because there's a lot that has gone on these past couple months, and there's still a lot of activity and a lot of things that we're going to have to react to and, and, and project as we move forward, and we appreciate uh, their presentations uh, on that. So uh, no questions from me, a lot of comments, but that, that, thank, thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, so a motion to receive by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Hime.
Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Right, moving on to item five, a discussion and vote on polling locations, and I believe our town clerk, Ms. Brazil is going to be joining us for that discussion um, before we have our internal discussion vote. Internal public discussion. Good evening, Ms. Brazil. A little earlier today.
Doing alright. Um, so I wanted to let you know that there's been um, some confusion. Um, Attorney Hime and I have been um, trying to sort this out. Uh, the, there's, there was a special act language passed that sort of surplants the standard um, process for a select board designating polling locations. And it sort of was an outgrowth of a lot of people, a lot of communities making changes during the pandemic. Um, uh, and so, uh, but it basically now, um, what I need, what we need to do tonight is I get a preliminary vote of uh, what the select board would like for all of the polling locations. Um, I'll need to do a very detailed site study to evaluate accessibility and send in the, the report and pictures to the elections division uh, for any new space that we are interested in using. And then um, when that has been okayed, we will uh, will, we may need to take a final vote. Um, and prior to that, um, they seem to be asking for a report. Um, just a statement from the board indicating um, that they've looked at it and there, the chain, any change that we're making to a current location wouldn't have a disparate adverse impact on access to the polls on the basis of race, national origin, disability, and come or age. So um, I have some sample language. I, I would be happy to draft that um, for the board. Um, but that's sort of the process the state seems to have. I don't know if, if Attorney Hime wants to add anything to that. It's been a very confusing week trying to sort this out.
Attorney Hime.
The only thing that I'd add is, is that um, you know, there, the, the, the way that a special act is read in Congress with a general law can sometimes be prone to some conflicting interpretation. But at the end of the day, the secretary of state's office is uh, sort of asking us to do something or informing us that we have to do something um, that I didn't necessarily anticipate, given my reading of that special act. I think what's critical is what's pretty apparent on its face. It's just that Arlington is well-positioned to make sure that folks have access to the polls. We've already got a lot of data that affirms that. I still think that in order to avoid any concern about the legitimacy of polling locations, the board should take a preliminary vote tonight to say, this is where we think these polling locations should be. And then using the data that we gathered for the purposes of both precincting and just other common sense data, I believe the clerk and I were talking about, surely I hope we're not reiterating a point that she already made, but you know, we have 11 polling locations in five and a half square miles. Um, we're required, in theory, we could have only one. In theory, we could also have polling locations outside the boundaries of, of Arlington. So I think that there's a lot of sort of prima facie evidence that we basically satisfy these tests, but I think the board should take its vote tonight and that we should submit a report um, in abundance of uh, respect for the secretary's interpretation of the special act uh, and make sure that there's no, you know, uncertainty or clouds hanging over our polling locations. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Attorney Hime. Um, so I don't know if you wanted to add anything further before I, um, okay, good. Alright, thank you. And I want to thank you, both, both you and Attorney Hime. If we, we had some conversations in the past week and there's been a fair amount of dialogue with the elections division and, and we thought at, at least at a minimum, whether we call it a preliminary vote or a contingent vote tonight, it was important for us to designate the, the polling locations that, that uh, we would like to put in place, beginning with the uh, annual town election. And then there may be some further follow-up, as you mentioned, that we have to come back to have a confirmatory vote afterwards, after some of the research is done. Um, but I wanted to turn it over to board members um, for, for comment, discussion, and, and then the ultimate vote, and I'll start with Mr. Hurd.
I didn't want to start on this one. Um, so if we're looking, are you looking for a motion right now or just discussion?
If, if, if you'd like to have discussion first and then we could, we can go to a vote, that's fine too. Um, if, if there's any particular concerns you have, we.
Or, or in particular polling?
Sure.
I mean, you know, I make a down to 21. I mean, I, I think we've seen a, a good amount, and I appreciate all the work that the clerk and staff has done um, on trying to identify for us locations that make sense with the current precinct map, and I think a lot of locations do make sense. Um, my thoughts, there, there was a proposal about uh, the high school, which I, I mean, certainly could work, um, but I, I think some uncertainties make that kind of not an ideal location for the precincts that are being proposed there, and you, there's been a lot of discussion about precinct 10 or a lot of correspondence that were. And there's been a lot of discussion about precinct ten or a lot of correspondence that were received about precinct ten. And the vast majority of it has been individuals that want to remain at town hall. And I think it's good, it's a noble cause to try to spread out some of the resources to make sure that we're not overloading any locations. But I do think town hall can handle a certain, if it ends up that, you know, we put a few more precincts in town hall, then we need to, that that location should be able to handle that. So, I would lean towards leaving precinct ten at town hall. But I don't know what further comment you're looking for, Mr. Chair, if that's just kind of general thought as to what we've seen.
Yeah, I think maybe just the way this is going to go, maybe what we do is get comments from members in terms of particular concerns they may have or issues. And if you want to comment, the other suggestion, you mentioned the high school. The other suggestion that had come up is the Gibbs School. I don't know if you have any.
I think the Gibbs School is a great location for the suggested precincts. And we've had some correspondence in favor of that, where I think now that that's under the town's control and we have a newly renovated building, that should certainly be one of the locations that we consider. So, I think that the Gibbs School is definitely a good location. And I'm on board with putting the close-by precincts at Gibbs.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
Well, I was expecting, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, I was expecting the clerk to like give us a recommended set of polling locations. I haven't even, I had this spreadsheet that I had kind of discussed with the clerk. And so, if you have that handy, Ms. Brazil, could you pull it up? Otherwise, I can ask you to take someone else, Mr. Chair, and I'll pull it up. I'll tell you, sharing, you know, on my screen could be a little bit of an issue.
Okay. All right. This is the recommendation that you're referring to from the Election Modernization Committee that we had at our meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Well, it's kind of based on, it's based on that, and then it's based on some input that we got from residents. And it certainly used the Gibbs School. It kept six at Hardy. It kept eight and ten at town hall. It brought nine over to town hall. It kept seventeen at Pierce. It took five and seven. And so, it took five from Thompson and put it over at Gibbs. And everything else remained the same. So, I think I recalled it correctly. So, in my discussion with the clerk, we were kind of leaning towards that one. I had initially advocated for taking nine, putting nine and seven at Gibbs and keeping five at Thompson. But I think the clerk made a good case for taking nine over to the high school. And we then keep eight and ten at, I'm sorry, take nine over to town hall. I'm going to probably say high school. When I say high school, I mean town hall. Please forgive me. And eight and ten, I mean, at town hall, you know. So, I like that one. And so, I was expecting the town clerk to even present that one or the one with the high school. And so, was that clear, folks?
Yeah, Ms. Brazil, do you have that sheet that just lays out? Because maybe that's the best way to go. We can comment on any particular concern of what we agree with on that sheet.
Schedules. Yeah, I can do that. I mean, one of the issues is it's now eight different presentations. That's the four we talked about before, plus the two suggestions from residents that I threw in. And then, and then two scenarios that Mr. Diggins provided. But if it's helpful to put it up there, I'm happy to do that.
Well, yeah, I don't know if it's helpful to have eight different versions, but. What I'd almost like to do, just for the board's benefit, is maybe even if we went back and talked about change, I'd just like to see something that lays out what we have right now. And maybe the eight schedules is the best way to do it, just for to help the discussion here in terms of where we go. Because I think we're going to come down to four or five locations that we really need to focus in on. And, yeah.
So, the current is here.
Right, okay.
And then, and then, you know, and that's a question of, you know, if we're not using the high school, then, you know, that changes, that changes things. So, basically, you know, a lot of it boils down to, you know, do you want to use the high school? Which precincts go into the Gibbs? Do you, you know, and that's just sort of, that's the part where it's really up to the board to determine, you know, how many polling locations at once. There are a bunch of scenarios that end up leaving us with one precinct in the location, which isn't as efficient, you know. So, you know, it's difficult, you know.
Right.
There are a lot of variables.
This has the, to where we are now. Mr. Diggins, maybe if I could suggest this, and Mr. Hurd had made comments on the high school and on Gibbs. And I think you have talked about Gibbs, supporting Gibbs. Maybe you could, if you have any issues with the high school or whether you support having locations there, and we can try to frame the discussion that way. And I'll try to pull it together once every member talks.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I got confused when you mentioned the high school part, because the one I was favoring was the one with Gibbs, not the high school.
Okay. So, what I was asking for is what your position was on the high school. So, if you don't favor having any polling locations at the high school, that will be a second member now who would prefer not to have something at the high school, at least for this year.
Yeah, sorry about that. It was a little noisy. So, I heard you. I just didn't want you to be interrupted by silence. Yes, I mean, I'm very much in favor of Gibbs and not using the high school. And, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Eight and ten at town hall.
Okay. All right. And I believe you said nine at town hall as well?
Nine at town hall as well, and in closing Bishop, and I forget where it goes.
And one of the renditions, it goes to Stratton. So, all right, so why don't we, I'll hear from every member and then we'll try to pull it together. As I said, and I'll turn to Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think I definitely favor the Gibbs. I think there's, sounds like there's consensus on that. I also think there's been a good case to be made for moving to nine to town hall. So, I like eight, nine, and ten at town hall. I think with the high school, I don't mind using the high school. I think superintendent thinks that that's feasible. I know that, talking to one school board member, and they pointed out, you know, that we vaccinated twelve hundred students in one day, plus the parents, a twenty-four hundred people went through in one day. They managed signage in the construction fine. But I don't know what the accessibility situation is there. And I think that's something that, you know, we'd have to look very, very closely at. But, you know, I think, I think some of my colleagues here at the board are more familiar with the high school layout and plan than I am. So, you know, I gladly cede to that wisdom there. I do think, you know, I like long-term after this year, after more of the high schools completed. I really like the idea of a high school as a location. I think that that solves a couple of problems that we have with locations now. So, I'd like to really look at that. And, you know, I don't, I don't mind looking at this year as a bit of a transition, particularly if we think that the high school is kind of a goal, you know. And, you know, maybe we don't have a perfect solution this coming year. I also don't mind some inefficiency in that regard. You know, we don't want to be profligate with our expenses, but I think it's more important to make it easy for people to vote. It's not, you know, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference. So, you know, I would lean towards finding a workable solution, even if we think of it as something short-term here. And, you know, I think there are some problems to be solved at Bishop and Pierce. I don't have strong feelings about those. I think my one question I would offer is like, do we need to solve this year or do we look at it? Do we look at, taking a whack at that next year when we may have more, a clearer consensus from this body to use the high school? So, those are just some questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan?
Okay, I'm hearing the consensus, which I agree with. Five and seven at Gibbs, making one and three at Thompson, two, four, six at Hardy, seven, eight. Eight, I'm sorry, eight, nine, ten at the town hall. Everything else remains the same for now. I don't think we should even look at the high school for at least two years. I'd like to see seventeen go there. I'm not a hundred percent sold, but also adding fourteen, I think, just seventeen. But that's not even on the table for tonight, because, you know, maybe two, three years down the road when the high school's finalized. And so, that's where I'm at, which I think is where I think I'm hearing consensus on. And I understand that the town clerk will now take this and do her due diligence. And it's not the final vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and thank you for running down the list. I have a list here in front of me. And I think that captures a couple of comments. I agree for two, four, and six that that should remain at Hardy. I like five and seven at the Gibbs. I think two, four, and six works well. I agree on eight through ten. Seems like there's consensus on that. I think at some point in the future, just as other members have said, the high school may be appropriate, but it's just too early to be talking about that while it's under construction and some of the unknowns and some of the demands frankly on the red gym right now during the spring. So, I mentioned ten, mentioned nine at town hall, twelve and fourteen at Brackett, thirteen and fifteen at Stratton. One issue, and I think it's an issue, because I've heard two different things from members. I personally would be in favor of keeping precinct eleven at Bishop for this year, because there's a lot of change in the precincts. I do think it makes sense to have only one precinct there. I spoke with Mrs. Kropelka earlier today about this issue. And more than one precinct at Bishop has been a problem historically. So, again, for this year, given the change that we're already making in the number of precincts and the way things have been reconfigured, I think if we can provide some certainty to precinct eleven at Bishop, that makes sense to me. And I think for precinct seventeen, again, for consistency, putting it at Pierce. I know the parking isn't ideal up there, but for this year, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one at Pierce seems to make the most sense for me. So, unless there's any questions on, you know, there was some discussion on Gibbs, whether another precinct would be included there or not. But I see Mr. Hurd's hand up, so I'll go back to him for any further comments. But I think we're narrowing in on reaching a consensus here.
Yeah, I'll just take a second crack at that now that I have the, I'm not flying blind. So, in addition to what I had said before, I think what I said about town hall comports with what most of the members have said. And as far as Bishop, we've had some correspondence from members of precinct nine, which includes some elderly buildings that the Bishop School would just be overly burdensome for them to get to the school. So, I agree that town hall is a location, is the appropriate location for precinct nine. And then, like, I agree with what the chair just mentioned, that at least for this year, why not at least utilize the Bishop School? So, if we could put one precinct in Bishop, I think that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Does anybody else have any comments? Because I'm going to read down a list here, but Mr. Diggins, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess we, my only concern about Bishop is that I think, you know, I know that the number of election workers is really based more on the number of precincts. But I think we're going to have some challenges getting election workers. So, I think everybody that we can not have to get, the better. And that is not really, please believe me, I'm not trying to minimize the number of locations for money. It is really just a matter of staffing. So, but I hear you. So, it's not, there's no upset if we keep Bishop open. It's just another little thing to take into account. I'm more than happy to go with, I think, is the consensus. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Hey, you just, a quick question. So, under, I think I liked what I was hearing the chair lay out. But where was precinct five again, in that, in your suggestion?
At Gibbs.
Okay, yeah, I like that too. And I would concur that, you know, like, none of us know, none of us think that Bishop is ideal. But I think, I think the chair's point of kind of minimizing destruction right now would be a helpful thing. And, you know, I think we're all, it seemed to be consensus that we're looking kind of at realignment once we have the resource of the high school. So, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Helmuth. So, I'm going to read, Ms. Brazil, did you want to say something in response to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the board, I forwarded all of the comments I got. There were, there was a comment from precinct five indicating that some people in precinct five were concerned that there was more, there was not enough parking at the Gibbs. There was more parking at the Thompson. So, you know, it is, it is possible to not change five and just add seven to the Gibbs. Yeah, I mean, you know, we could, we could try it for the town election and see how people liked it. Their parking's not an issue on a Saturday. And, you know, I, it's, I just wanted to, I just wanted to toss that out there as just one thought. I agree, seven, you know, seven is very well-served at the Gibbs. After that, it's really a question of what the board thinks makes sense.
Yeah, I thank, thank, thank you for those comments. I had actually received some comments from people in precinct five who like Gibbs. So, I, so let me do this. Let me read down this list, okay? And if we have a consensus, I'll ask for a motion. I think we do. So, what we have, and I'll go right down the order, one and three at Thompson, two, four, and six at Hardy, five and seven at Gibbs, eight, nine, and ten at town hall, eleven at Bishop, twelve and fourteen at Brackett, thirteen and fifteen at Stratton, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty at Dallin, and seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one at Pierce. Okay. If that's what the board is comfortable with, I'd ask for a motion on that or any further comment, if there's any further discussion that people want to have.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments from Mr. Hurd or Mr. Helmuth? Seeing none. Okay, so on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hymn?
Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Thanks to the chair for pulling that together. Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Brazil. And we'll be back for the confirmatory vote and we will coordinate with you before that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now, moving to the consent agenda, items six, seven, and eight. Item six, minutes of meetings, January twenty-two and January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Item seven, for approval, we read together banners. Item eight, acceptance of funds received from various entities. On the consent agenda, on Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Helmuth?
Second. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. And just one quick thing, and I believe we mentioned it to Ms. Mar. There, just one small administrative change on the twenty-fourth on the subcommittee of the signs. It's Mr. Hurd and Mr. Diggins, but that will be reflected in the actual minutes. So, if the vote is to that effect, we're good to go, if you don't mind that, Mr. Diggins, as a slight amendment on those minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's fine.
Okay. All right. It's one a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, Attorney Hymn?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item nine, for approval, Arlington Education Foundation 5K Race on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Laura Fuller from the Arlington Education Foundation. Is Ms. Fuller with us this evening?
Yes, she is, Mr. Chair. I just promoted her to panelist.
Yes, she is, Mr. Chair. I just promoted her to panelist.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here.
Great. Yeah, why don't you tell us a little bit about the the race and and the approval that you're seeking for that date?
Certainly. I would also like to note that I have online today Judy Guyer, who is the president of the Arlington Education Foundation. And Siobhan Hanley, who is also working with me on organizing the race. For any questions that you have, I think you are all familiar with the Arlington Education Foundation. We are an Arlington nonprofit. And we work to support and advance public education here in Arlington. We, as an organization, we like to engage the Arlington community to share. Awareness of our work and also find creative ways to fundraise. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic over the last two years, we've been unable to hold our traditional events, which in the fall is a. A grant showcase where we bring in all the grants we've awarded or a good number of the grants we've awarded in the past year. And we invite community members to come and celebrate those and learn more about what we are. The innovation that's happening in our school. And then in the spring, and I think many of you are involved in this, is our annual trivia B, which we hold at town hall. And that's really just a fun event to bring community members together. And to share some of the wisdom that our fifth graders know and then also are the adults in our community. So. At we've been, we've been moving forward as we can during the pandemic and we have been seeking other outdoor opportunities. To bring the community together during these times. I think, for example, in October, we. Quickly put together an event to welcome Dr. Liz Holman to Arlington. And that was just a wonderful event in the Town Hall Garden. So we appreciate being able to do that. But as we're seeking another opportunity, we became aware that other education foundations in neighboring towns have actually used. Five K events to bring community together and to create awareness of their organization. And so we have been looking at this and talking to other race organizers, excuse me, other race organizers in the area. For this event, which we are proposing on May fifteenth, which is a Sunday morning in the spring. We propose to start at about eight AM. We are planning to partner with Arlington Community Education, which. Coordinates through their after-school programs, several running clubs for children in town here in our public schools. So, for example, the Fit Girls Program, which is for fourth and fifth graders across most elementary schools. Boys in Motion for for boys in the elementary schools, and then there are running clubs. Across Gibbs and the Audison. And there are actually wedding clubs at the high school as well, so we are hoping to work with them for volunteers for this event. And our plan is, so many of those programs, those kids work. Toward to building up the endurance to run a five K, and then at the end of the program, they all sign up together and run the five K together. So. It would just be really great to host that event in Arlington where you get all these Arlington kids, maybe their parents, maybe their teachers. Running together here in town. So our proposal is, again, as I said, May fifteenth race, which is a Sunday morning. Hopefully starting at eight AM. And we have been working with Joe Conley at the Recreation Department and the Rink. To set that up to begin and end at Hills Hill Field, which is right there in the Ed Burns Arena Complex. Our plan is to hopefully have about a maximum of six hundred participants, we believe. With full participation of all those running programs, about half of that. Those participants will come from those running programs and affiliates of those running programs, and then that would open it up for another three hundred participants from our community, hopefully. And the roots, as I said, is going to start and end on Hills Hill Field. Our plan is to use the bike path, the Minuteman Bike Way. To start the race, head east on the bike path all the way to Water Street. Take a quick jog from Water Street to Mass Ave and then head west. All the way to Lowell Street, which gets you to the bike path via Fraser Street. And ideally, we would propose that we close the bike path for this race. We did learn from Mr. Conley that the town day race that was held actually in twenty twenty-one without town day. They did get some traffic from bikers interfering with runners and and that made it difficult. So. He advised if we could to close the bike path. If not, our backup plan is actually to. Create some signage, get it out there a couple of weeks in advance, and then to use any public notices in town on here to. Make the public aware that there will be a race that will be held on the bike path on that Sunday morning. And hopefully, if it starts at eight, it will be completed by nine thirty, and hopefully, at that point, most of the traffic will be missed. And and our, to follow up as well, we plan to follow all CDC guidelines in our conversations with the Board of Health. They are happy with us having an outdoor event, but I think, you know, following CDC guidelines as they evolve. In May is our plan to to do that. And that involves just keeping. What we're offering to participants to water, and then we are proposing just offering. Some sort of food because there are so many kids participating in the race. So perhaps like a granola bar or something that one of our sponsors can supply. And then we're finally, we're going to engage with, following approval by the board. We will engage further with the police department. We have talked to them briefly about this, and they are on board, given your approval. Just to ensure that we have proper details at road crossings and for the safety of all participants. And if anybody has any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. I'll turn to the board now. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move approval. This is happening on this date. Hopefully all sunshine, maybe a little bit of clouds, but I see there's no rain date, so that's. It's one of my questions, and I think definitely, once this board approves that, speaking with. Officer Rato and others with the police department. As well as maybe Attorney Heim, if the town actually can close the Minuteman Trail. If not, either way, if we can or cannot do that, definitely signage getting up at least the week before. Just to let people know, and I think, you know, having done town day for so many years, it really will give the event organizers. As well as our police department a little more, if we can't close off the Minuteman Trail, the signage has gone up. It kind of helps with. The one percent of of people, persons that are just going to want to argue the points that. If we can say this has been up for a week, you know about it. So, and I do appreciate Ms. Fuller and Skyer. You know, my roots started in PTO and didn't have anything like COVID, no pandemic. And barely an endemic back then, and what you all have done to, you know, continue on. Fundraising and more importantly, get the message out and tie in between our children and our. Adults here in Arlington, I'm very appreciative about. So. God bless you, and I'll pray for good weather and let us know what else the board can do to help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard?
Thank you. Happy to support the motion. I always look forward to the five Ks in town, and I think it's. We've had a few over the years, some that are on an annual basis and some one-offs that come into town for various reasons. So. I think it's it's a fun event for everyone that's involved, and it's a good, safe event to to conduct right now. I am on a little bit of a health and wellness kick, so you, maybe I'll I'll suit up for the race. We'll see where I am in a few months. But again, you guys do so much for the town of Arlington and the kids. I have kids in the schools, so I certainly appreciate that. I admit, I've mentioned, I do miss the trivia B. In March twenty twenty. Myself, the chair, and our former colleague, Mr. Curl. Had an all-star team that was locked and ready to go for the trivia B that was supposed to be at the end of March, and the that never was. So. We'll look forward to when we can have it again and and see who we can put together from the board at that time. So. Again, happy to support it, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We we were well prepared. I. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so. So the folks who use the bike pass, I mean, what alternative do they have when it's closed?
Mr. Chapl, I mean, streets, right? I I I think it's, you know, they they may have to go to Mass Ave or or. Look for, depending where they're, where they're getting off, this would, this would start right at the rink there, right at. Right next to the ring. So from there down to Mill Street, that 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 would be the detour.
It would be, it would be about a mile and a half of the bike path. It would go from Fraser Street, which is right near Lowell Street. All the way to Water Street. So, yes, we would suggest that they use Mass Ave around there or Summer Street.
Gotcha. So I think this is to, I think, to town council. So what is potentially the barrier to closing the bike path?
I'll have to look at this a little bit more closely, Mr. Diggins. I appreciate Ms. Mahan's concern. The bike path is basically given to Arlington to run by agreement by the MBTA. I presume, but I'm not a hundred percent positive that we can close it for limited periods of time for an event. But I'd have to look into it. I I frankly don't know the answer off the top of my head, and I wouldn't want to mislead anybody. Again, it's it's Arlington's to essentially operate by agreement with the MBTA and. You know, I I don't, off the top of my head, believe it's that different than a street closure for. An event or purpose for some other, you know, reason, a parade or something like that. So I I think it's. Fine, but I'll I'll double check and make sure.
Right, right. Appreciate. So, I definitely think it's safer to close the bike pass, but I. I guess it's just my 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 prejudice. I have an easier time closing a street to cars than I do. Closing the bike pass, you know, to cyclists and pedestrians, I guess, because I guess. Take out the, I guess, my concern is that we we put the cyclists being in. More jeopardy, you know, by shifting them onto the streets, I mean, than than we do by just having the cars revert onto another street. And I'm not concerned so much about a slippery slope where, you know, everyone will come asking us for this, but. But it's just my kind of hesitancy to just kind of go, okay, well, let's close the bike pass and and have the race, but. But it's a good cause, you know, and I just had to state that 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 overall concern, and so now you've heard it, and. I'm happy to move on and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. I I just want to clarify something. It's actually not Mill Street. It's Water Street, it's a little further. Down and then coming back Fraser Street is a little bit big, just that they. Where Lowell Street splits from Mass Ave, that that's the side street there. So. Thank you for your comments, and Mr. Helmet?
Thank you. Thanks to the AAF folks. I enjoyed being able to go to this past summer's event, welcoming Dr. Holman. It was really well done. It was a great event, and, you know, it's good to see you, see you out there. Just a question for you, looking at the permit. You mentioned closing the bike way, your proposal for a couple of different different timeframes. One in one place, it says. Eight thirty, ten AM and one thirty, one, seven thirty to nine. Did you, do you have a sense for which one of those you are landing on right now?
Seven thirty to nine is more appropriate at this point. We, and the history of that is that we originally suggested nine AM as the race start, and then we were given the advice that we should go earlier. Just so it doesn't conflict with church services and the population getting out there to to exercise and. And so we, so we did move the race date, so we are, we are proposing for the race to begin at eight o'clock. So we would like the bike path to be closed from seven thirty to nine. Hopefully, I would say nine or nine thirty at this point.
Thank you. And will you talk, and I apologize if you address this in this, is this a staggered start or is this kind of an all at once?
Currently, we are thinking all at once, and I think that will depend on the number of registrants and the CDC guidelines at the time. So the big concern is leaving Hills Hill Field and getting onto the bike path. That there might be a bottleneck there, and if that is the case, I I think what we would do is start the kids' race. Offer all the kids running for all the programs would start earlier, and then after a ten-minute delay, we would start everybody else.
Okay, all right, yeah, thanks. So to my colleagues, I actually have some reservations about closing the bike path, and I don't. I think just because. I mean, I'm I'm open to the wisdom, greater wisdom of my colleagues, but I think we should be. Aware, you know, that's the Minuteman commuter bike way. It's not just a recreational resource. There are people who rely on it for transit. And plan on having it available. Now, that's a good time of day. I think I'm happier with the earlier timeframe of that. And I understand, you know, we have, I understand there are safety concerns, and I and I care about those. I don't know if. A solution can be made to keep the bike path open, but to somehow restrict a lane of that for the road race, for instance. But my question, I guess, is to maybe to, and I'm not sure who this is to, Mr. Chair, you can direct it. Is the closure of the bike path something that the select board would would determine in this vote? Or are we approving the larger permit and, you know, the town manager essentially would would direct that that decision finally?
Well, I may ask Attorney Heim on that. My my understanding is that would be part of our vote, that that that. Those were part of that time, but I do believe Mrs. Mahan said in her comments, work with the police department, and if there are issues that come up. There may be, have to be a sharing of the of the of the bike way. It's not ideal, but I think. I think this is approval understands that there may be more dialogue with the police department and perhaps with Attorney Heim researching. The extent of of our authority there, too, but that we'd like to see this go forward. If there are serious reservations after further discussion with Officer Rato or or Attorney Heim finds anything. It may have to be more of a shared experience on the bike way.
Yeah, sure.
And did you want to add anything to that or?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, our, as you may recall, we set the hours for when the bike way is allowed to be open. So I I I I do think that 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 you can improve. Subject to conditions, but if the board is not inclined to close the bike path, I think just. On its own merits, it can certainly make that decision, or you basically have to modify the proposal that's in front of you. In order to approve the proposal, but not approve that. So. In my mind, the board should be voting on, does it want to basically grant the permit subject to confirmation that. The bike way can be closed, or it should be approving it. You know, with the idea that there will be some concrete alternate plan that's required in order to gain approval.
Yeah, so that that's helpful. Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Chaplain had his hand up.
I'm I'm sorry to interject. I just thought this might be a good time. I. I I'm happy to further coordinate. With the police department and any other appropriate departments, and I and I would add, and I think a number of people on the screen have probably done the same. I've run a number of the Council on Aging Arlington for All Ages Road Races, which uses a portion of the bike path down in East Arlington. Over the years, and it's never been closed and has operated without incident, as far as I'm aware. So I I think it's doable. You know, there is more width on the sides of the bike path in East Arlington than there is. In the heights, but I don't think it's an entirely different construct. So I I think I don't want to dismiss what Joe Conley said about there being some conflicts with the the Moynihan race, but. I I think based on past precedent, it is something we can work for.
Thank you. I think Mr. Diggins struck struck the note that that really does doesn't have a kind of concern, and that is, I mean, safety for the race matters. This is a great race. I want to support it. But shuttling people who are who who may need to use the bike path for for community purposes. Onto the streets, given especially this is the long closure of the bike path. That concerns me. I'm not sure I want to, I want to support that. But I'll, you know, I'll see how my colleagues want to do. I think I might offer an amendment to Mrs. Mahan's motion that we would approve. With the modification of of not closing the bike way, but finding an acceptable solution, but, you know, that'll be up to Ms. Mahan if that's an acceptable amendment. Or, you know, Mr. Chair, you can figure out how to how to handle that. Certainly, I want to respect my colleagues' preference.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Before, I'd like to, Mr. Heard had his hand up, so I'd like to ask him if he wants to add anything to the discussion here, and then we can. Talk about a potential amendment. Ask him if he wants to add anything to the discussion here and then we can talk about a potential amendment.
Yep, um. So I'd say one thing, I a couple of years ago ran Summerville Road Race, the Summerville Homeless Coalition Road Race, and that used a portion of the bike path. That did, and when we did that, it we looked down Mass Ave and we just came one way down. The bike path and I'm not aware that it was closed and it was fine in that. Once everyone starts together, but. Very few people run at the same pace, so you sort over a five K you sort of spread out. But I mean. Yeah. Again, you know, we can look at the safety concerns and leave it to the police department to review the safety concerns. I mean, I would admit, I I don't want to discount that nobody can commute on a Sunday, but I mean, this is a Sunday morning, so I think the vast majority of the people using that are going to be recreational users. And I think the concern with kids, the Summerville Road Race was mostly adults, where we have kids. Is that, you know, ninety seven percent of the people that the cyclist on the bike path. Use it in a safe and, you know, prudent way. I think the concern is the three percent that. Come down at forty miles an hour and don't really want to slow down for anybody on the bike path and. You know, I've been on the bike path just on normal days. With the kids where I I think to myself, it's not a really good place for kids to be just because there's people that. Aren't really concerned about the wayward paths that kids take sometimes as as they move about the universe. So I mean, I think if there's a way that we can. Leave it for further investigation, that's fine. But I mean, I don't think it's overly onerous to ask some recreational cyclist to that for a couple of hours to. You know, maybe. Drive down to Lexington and use that portion of the bike path or so, I mean, those are my thoughts.
Okay, tha- tha- thank you, Mister Hurd. Um Mister Helmut, did you want to offer an amendment?
Uh. I don't think I will. I think Mister Hurd makes makes a decent point.
And 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 I will say and 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 think, I I do think Mrs. Mahan's motion will capture that if 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 it. Can't be done and it has to be some sort of shared use after consultation with the police and then why don't we include the town manager in that as. As well, then then um I I think Miss Fuller, Miss Guyer, if that's. Acceptable, we may have to adjust as as further research is done, but we want to at least give you the the permit and then. Talk about the scope of the the bikeway use as 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 further consultation. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan that is seconded by Mister Hurd, um Attorney Hyman.
Mister Hurd?
Yes.
Mister Diggins?
Yes.
Mister Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mister Corsi?
Yes.
To unanimous vote.
Thank you both.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, item ten for approval, Arlington Public Art Youth Banner Initiative on Massachusetts Avenue in Arlington Center. From April one, twenty twenty two through May thirty one, twenty twenty two, Sarah Gurney, Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. Mister Gurney, she's here with us this evening. Good evening, Miss Gurney.
Hi, I'm Sarah Gurney. I'm the new youth banner coordinator. And um we uh would like to propose to um permit to install um twenty-two banners this year. On eleven light poles in April and May. And I I submitted a presentation. I don't know if I can share it here. I'm gonna try to do that. Um can you see that? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um I'm just gonna go through the slideshow. This is all of the work that has been selected for the banners. The theme this year is color. And we had over a hundred applicants and we selected twenty and three of those will be getting scholarships too. Uh we had six art jurors in December. We had um Mister Hel- Helmut and was one of the jurors and we had Police Chief Flaherty. And three art teachers and a local artist.
And and the period here is April one through May thirty one on the request. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Right. Um while we were showing this, maybe I it unless you want to add anything, I I may turn to the board for any comments. In the motion. Okay, and I'll start with our juror, uh Mister Helmut.
Thank you. I'm glad we're I'm glad we're seeing this. This was this was a real pleasure. I appreciate being included. It was a a joy to do this with Chief Flaherty and and the art teachers who are outstanding. The students showed just a high level of talent uh all the way from the middle school up to the high school. Uh it was really tough. We had a lot of high quality submissions and I'll be really proud to see these um. On our flight poles. So thank you.
And and I do, do you want to make a motion on it?
Oh, yes. Yeah, in fact, I do. I'd like to move approval. Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you. Uh Mrs. Mahan.
Second, thank you. No questions.
Okay, Mister Hurd?
Happy to support this. It went through the artwork and um there are some beautiful artwork that I think will really enhance the visibility of Mass Ave. Um I love this. The theme this year is very appropriate for a student art contest, which is color, which leads to some. Really interesting work, which I look forward to. Want to thank Mister Helmut for for serving on. The uh juror committee and give a shout out to Ms. Greenland, the much beloved Dalen Art Teacher as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hurd. Mister Diggins?
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Me, the the art is really right up my alley. I mean, I love that abstract impressionistic a kind of art and uh and. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to participate, but I think that day I had like three meetings in uh uh and so I just couldn't couldn't do it. Uh so a couple of questions, you know, one um to um is um, I'm sorry, Miss Gurney. Uh um um is it possible for us to see the other um artwork online or something?
Oh, everything that was submitted?
Yes.
Uh we we gave everything back, I think, except for what was selected.
The answer is no, that's fine. Um uh uh and the second is that, yeah, you have two months, you know, which is a a pretty long amount of time we to. Um to to have the polls, which is fine, eh, but I was just thinking maybe next year if we do two months again, I mean, maybe we could have like. More art, be like one month for one set of panels and a little bit for another set of panels, you know, so just put it out. There's an idea. Eh so but happy to support this. Thank you.
There were some great, really great applicants. Um and I, can I add one one um detail is the reason we want an extra light pole this year? Is we're gonna be adding two banners, um one at each end with signage. That was the last slide that was shown there. Um it was designed by Adria Arch and usually I guess they've done the text on the actual artwork. So this year, we we thought it was best to separate that signage.
Thank you. Any anything further, Mister Diggins?
No, I'm not, I'm fine, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Okay, great. And yeah, and I'm happy to support this as well and and I want to thank you for bringing this forward to us and thank Mister Helmut. For his participation and and it looks like excellent choices uh as part of the overall group. So. On a motion by Mister Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Hyman.
Mister Hurd?
Yes.
Mister Diggins?
Yes.
Mister Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mister. Mister Corsi?
Yes.
To unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um it's nine fifteen now. Before I move on to open forum, would members like a five minutes? Break. We'll take a break now. Come back at nine twenty?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hey, good. All right. Well, welcome back. Uh next on the agenda is open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board. Shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Uh Mister Chaplain, I just if there are any anyone who wishes to be heard uh for open forum.
Right now, there's one hand raised, Carl Wagner.
Good evening, Mister Wagner.
You hear me? Uh, having a little bit of trouble. Uh, having a little bit of trouble. Let me go a little closer. Is that any better?
Yes.
Let me see if I can adjust the uh audio seems to be automatic. Oh, it's automatically adjusted anyway. Uh I'll try to speak loudly. I I just wanted to uh reach out to the. Board following my letter to this for the uh Cutter Hill Road blasting that's planned for uh February or March. Did any of you get a chance to see that or read that? I didn't see it on the list of of materials selected for select board tonight from the public, and this is the first meeting, I believe, where you've had a chance to. Uh receive materials like that. Well, the purpose of the of of my letter to you and also to a couple of the boards in Arlington. Was that uh some private work is going to be done on a property that goes up between Cutter Hill, just where the fish shop is at the end of Mill Street there. And if any of you have driven there, you'd be aware that Cutter Hill Road has a very strange bottleneck that's unusual to streets in Arlington. It's a private way, unfortunately. It um it's an opportunity while blasting is happening to perhaps make the bottleneck into a much safer thoroughfare. Currently, there's no way for pedestrians to walk no sidewalk. There's not even a second lane for two lanes of traffic. There's only one lane. And it's uh it's not the only place in Arlington like that, but is a big safety hazard and it's always been something that. That we as a town couldn't do anything about. Well, since the private owner of property there is going to be blasting, perhaps you and the select board. And the powers be in the town could find a way to at least make maybe one sidewalk or enough space so that children. Users of the road could be a little bit uh safer, including driving vehicles could see each other better. So um please take a look if you can, uh the where the place where Summer Street and Mill Street end, there's a sort of semi dirt road there at Cutter Hill Road and. It really needs improvement. Um I would also point out that there are a lot of trees in the tree canopy on that property. It's not currently developed at all. And I hope that people will take a look at how many trees are there and find a way to work with the owner to save as many as possible. And possibly go allow the owner to not save the ones right at the edge, so pedestrian uh thoroughfares could be improved. Uh thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Wagner, for your comments and for the for the email that you sent us as well. Uh any anybody else, Mister Chaplain?
No, there is not.
Okay, uh we're moving on. Uh item eleven, under traffic rules and orders and other business. Item eleven, presentation, remote participation study committee interim report. Mister Helmut is a member of that committee, but okay, do we have, do we have someone from the?
Yeah, Mustafa should be joining at the here he is.
Hello, um is my audio coming through?
Yes, it is. Good evening.
Evening. Um well, thank you for giving us the time. Um I have two other um. People that are probably online that may be um helpful in answering any questions that come up, uh Vice Chair Jennifer Seuss and um. Alex Bagnon, who are on the Remote Participation Study Committee. Um I just wanted to let um. Which I could, yeah, um let let uh let you know before we get going. Um so I'm here on behalf of the Remote Participation Study Committee. Um this was a. Committee formed in the previous town meeting in twenty twenty two. And our remit was to study um and and understand the. Methods and ways of bringing the benefits of remote access that we've. In some sense, enjoyed in the pandemic, um one of the one of the benefits of the pandemic, um to have this these new ways of working and to um. See how they may um be applicable after the pandemic is over. And and see if they can be incorporated into um hybrid meetings um in the future, hybrid meetings, just to to find a front being. Meetings where people are assembled in one place physically and other people join in remotely and in this new age with video and audio. So we have some slides, if you don't mind. Um do you want me to put them up or um? Can you put them up? What's the best way to hear?
If you have, I I believe you may have capabilities to share. Is that, I think that might be. Yeah.
Here we go.
And is that showing up well?
Uh, yes, it is.
Great, thank you. Um so I'll um go through a short presentation. We we understand we have about ten minutes and um. See how busy your agenda is. So um. As I said, we were we were charged to um understand and and sort of how we may implement. Um or may study how we may um the benefits and how to implement these types of meetings. So. The article, um and also, excuse me, more specifically. Um as part of our remit, we are, we we submitted a report to the select board that you received in your documents. Um that's an interim report. Are are we will have a much more comprehensive report. Um presented detailing these charges here um to the town meeting this year and our. Commission, so to speak, goes until next year, the April twenty twenty-three town meeting. So this is the first interim report. Um to show a kind of share where we're headed and what we've learned. So briefly, we were charged with um. Understanding the benefits and challenges of hybrid meetings. Um. It was sort of broken down, you know, which bodies would we want to um provide? Would we propose that? Remote participation be a part of, which portions of the meetings should be um counter should be available for these um. Hybrid access, remote access. There was a remit um to look at um. What local rules or any changes we may need to the current rules to um for remote participation. Of course, the big one that everybody raises the cost and the the technical feasibility of these with hybrid remote participation. And then, you know, one of the benefits of hybrid, I mean, remote access in principle is accessibility. Enhancement to to let more people in, but we want to look at that more rigorously than just the what we all thought. And what was added is uh sort of later on in the discussion was. A way of understanding how public bodies provide information back to the public about um their work. And so those are the seven charges um that we were um tasked with. We started on um. September thirty. We were formed on September thirty, so it's been a very quick autumn. Um and we um we, what we did is we wanted to gather information before we started making any recommendations. So in this period, we've um developed and um. Conducted and analyzed and written two reports, which are in your meeting materials. We. Examine um the town. We asked the opinions of the members of the town boards, committees and commissions. There are sixty-four of these.
Mustafa, I I'm I'm sorry, Mustafa. I think that your slides are not um advancing and you you're probably doing it on a year end. Can you give that a quick try? Because I know I know it's in the deck.
Well, okay, um, excuse me. Your screen sharing is paused. I don't know why my screen sharing is paused. Let me try this again. Thank you for telling me.
Well, this this illustrates one of the challenges of hybrid meetings.
Yes. And then um embarrassing and informatively, we have had our own challenges. Um in our Remote Participation Study Committee remote meetings, um as you may imagine. So. Um are we on the information gathering what we did slide in your world? Okay, I see heads nodding. So. So this is what I was speaking to. We conducted the two surveys and as I mentioned, we did the uh the town meeting boards, commissions and committees. And of the sixty-four bodies, we received responses from sixty of these. Um and we received one hundred and forty-four individual responses. So we are obtaining, you know, more than one person per committee, giving us their feedback. Um. We didn't, um we 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 followed up a few times. We also wanted to hear what the people attending meetings, um in general, these would be most recently remote participants. But also in-person participants. So we built a different survey for them and um and that received three hundred fifty-four responses. And and then I slid it to all. I'll kind of go over what those were. We also had an interesting presentation by researcher Max Palmer, who works with Katie Einstein. Who um especially Katie and um and with Max Palmer, they study a lot of civic engagement issues. And one of the things that they um saw um from their from their studies is that, well. We all like to think that remote access may level the playing field for broader um spectrum of society and a more diverse set of people coming to meetings. What was interesting was that it it in general brought basically much the same um demographic that comes to in-person meetings. Which tends to um skew towards um homeowners, homeowners which sort of skews towards wealthier. Um and more established um residents of the town as opposed to maybe younger renters um and then more diverse. and then more diverse, um, populations. So that's something that was, um, an interesting piece of information. Well, we took away from these surveys and, and we didn't break it down by survey. We just broke it down, what people saw as the benefits and concerns, because mostly both the boards and commissions that were the members of those, um, that responded and the people that pub, in the public that attend these meetings, I essentially saw the same things from, from either side of this, um, divided, not divide, but you know, either side of the, uh, table. Um, so a lot of people raised the fact that in meetings such as this, they can tune in for the part that they care about. Um, you know, from the comfort of their home, they don't need to attend a meeting for three hours when they're concerned about 20 minutes of it. Um, and the board members said that that's also beneficial and that it gets people speaking to specific issues that they are concerned about. So it helps getting input into the boards. Um, so it was, it was positive from both sides. Um, it removes the physical space requirement or limitations in many ways. If the room is too small, um, you know, a lot more people can attend if they want to. There's sort of unlimited space in that sense. And this topic that's been raised a lot, um, it came in a lot of different flavors, but essentially it removes other obstacles to attending. Um, childcare came up a lot, um, traveling and whether the people otherwise wouldn't travel for, for something, you know, as I said earlier, if they had a short period they cared about, they might not want to travel in, in certain situations. People that are actually traveling out of town, but are interested in town business residents, um, can attend. And of course, physical accessibility, um, and, and disability constraints, um, these would help overcome those. Um, I think there was actually more unity on the concerns. And the top two really came out strong, the technical complexity, as you just saw, um, I'm fairly experienced at Zoom and I wasn't sharing my screen despite thinking I was sharing my screen. This came up, obviously, audio came up, the quality of audio, um, and people really want to not have those problems. Um, and then the other one more on a, um, let's say, um, um, from a meeting management and, um, and style or, um, perspective, people really want to have parity of experience and opportunity. So they, they're concerned that, you know, the remote folks won't be recognized. The people in, in person may not be, um, able to share their opinions as well. Um, and then they just wanted equity and parity in, in treatment. Um, and then on a practical manner, there's the thought that it's very challenging to manage, um, a meeting and people coming in and out and the audio, video and any challenges. So there really is, um, some way of identifying either, um, staff people that are present in meetings already or volunteers that may take this, um, this burden up within smaller boards and commissions to make this work. And then, um, this one came up a few times, you know, people enjoy gathering and people enjoy meeting people with like-minded interests, um, or people that they've seen at similar meetings. And there is a real feeling that that would be lost with this remote participation aspect. So these were the, and again, the details of these and much more are in the, um, in the survey reports that have been submitted to you. So, you know, our charge is to make rank, ranked recommendations. Um, and we've broken the recommendations into two, I, two, um, broad sections, sort of on the policy side and on the implementation side. So on the policy side, um, the select board and the school committee, we encourage, we ask the select board and school committee authorize, encourage and support hybrid participation in meetings. Um, and to just give a little bit of background, um, and it's actually, I just thought at the end of this, it's, it's a den, it's an addendum or an attachment to your, this current select board meeting. The legislation currently authorizes remote access and remote quorum, um, in this format that we're all in. Um, when we weren't in a remote environment, the select board, I believe at some point has authorized remote access to in-person meetings. And in the old days, that was, you know, a telephone dial-in number. And that's something in the open meeting law, there needs to be explicit authorization by the executive body of the town, whether it's the mayor or the select board or whatever else it may be, to provide this authorization. Um, so that would be something when we return, when the state legislation that we are currently operating under is over, I would expect that we would continue as had been authorized in the past, but that is something in the select board's control. And so we'd ask for that authorization, um, to continue, no, no change, but it's, it's a requirement. Beyond that authorization, we would really enjoy and, and, and hope to have the encouragement and support to, um, conduct hybrid meetings after, um, the legislation ends. This, um, this is more for our recommendation to ourselves, but we would like to, um, develop guidelines for different hybrid participation models. There are a wide variety of meetings, uh, this format with a board at the front and people coming to it. Formats where people sit around in a large table, small table, you know, small groups and so on. So we would like to, um, build out some hybrid, um, participation models to sort of address several broad swaths of meetings. And we'd also like to give some guidelines. And again, these are not rules or, or strict, you know, certainly not laws. Um, but just guidelines on how people should start to think about what will happen when you have technical failure and allow the boards and commissions to, um, to make their own choices. And then we would ask that the town, um, commit to active outreach, um, to raise awareness of meetings with a broader population. Um, and we're trying very hard to not put this on the DEI director explicitly. So we're looking and hoping to find other opportunities or options that can help do that. Cause that's, that's too easy an answer and that may just not be the best answer. It may overburden someone that's already busy. So on the implementation, um, we ask this, this comes to the, to select board, um, to invest in location and technologies, um, to pilot some hybrid meetings. And we selected these meetings, um, based on the feedback from the, especially the public's, um, survey results and from conversations with various members of these boards that they are willing to be the pilot for these, for this type of meeting. The, um, obviously the select board and school committee are already set up to run hybrid meetings. They have, um, you, both you and the school committee have rooms with the appropriate technology. So that's a somewhat easier lift. Um, it'll be more challenging for the other groups on this list. These were the highest ranked risk groups, and so we like to do that. To put this in perspective, currently the legislation ends at the beginning of April and, um, we expect it to be expand, extended till July. There's some legislation going around. So these pilots wouldn't start until the legislation, until we end our current all remote access. And that's something we would work towards trying to help get rolling. We also, um, in terms of identifying locations suitable for hybrid meetings, the select board chambers, um, with some improvements in technology are actually very well equipped. And for periods when the select board is not in use for the select board, we would ask that there be allow, um, remote participation in this space if these changes can be made to it. Uh, and right now I know that the ACMI, um, folks have been instrumental in keeping things running. And then when it's in hybrid format to keep things running. So that would be some, some technical changes would have to be made. We, um, would like to identify ways to, to, um, contemplate training and support for members of the boards, commissions and committees, how to run the meetings. Cause it may be good to share some best practices. And then we've identified a few places in the, in our, um, report, our interim report. One or two additional spaces, these baby rooms in the town hall annex, Lions Room and maybe rooms in the community center. We're asking for a lot at this time, just a one or two, to allow these pilots to start and, um, this process to begin to be in some maybe smaller rooms and some larger room, like a smaller room and a larger room, um, in those spaces. Our last slide is looking to the future. So this looks to the coming town hall meeting and beyond that. Um, we, towards the coming town hall meeting, we need to, um, really, um, be more definitive about the technology and, um, and then, and these guidelines that we're proposing for, um, for these meetings. Um, we'd like to find a second wave of meetings. The goal would be eventually to make this opportunity available to all boards and commissions that want to do this or feel that they, you know, um, or if the, or the attending members want them to do it. But we'd like to do this in a somewhat staggered fat, pan, manner. And then in this time, probably after town hall meeting, based on when the legislation will realistically allow hybrid meetings to start happening. Um, we like to gather information on what's working, what is, um, what needs, and you know, what can be improved and share that. Um, and then as part of our other commission that we already started talking about is, um, how can public bodies provide information back to the, um, public on what they're doing? And, and one thing, this kind of the, the end of, um, not the end, but it was, and it was an issue raised by many people on the surveys. Some people really like having, um, remote access and aren't really that keen on hybrid. So that would require legislative change to maintain remote access quorum for boards that gather. And maybe obvious, maybe not for the select board, but you could picture some much smaller committees that don't often have guests or, um, or, um, other people coming in and they, um, and they may want to be able to meet remotely, um, instead of in person, especially if the weather's terrible or, or somebody's traveling. So that would require, um, that's, that's under discussion, but we're considering how you may, we may, and other people may have to advocate for a legislature change for that. Um, so that's, um, that's it. I'd like to thank, um, everybody on the committee. It has been an intense three, four months of work. Uh, we met every two weeks, um, since October. Um, pretty much, um, we did take some time off around Thanksgiving and Christmas, but otherwise we've been going. And I'd like to thank the select board for their, um, attention and support.
Great. Thank you very much, Mustafa. And thank you to the members of the committee who are here this, uh, uh, tonight. Jennifer Seuss and Alexander Bagnon and, and, uh, Mr. Helmut. Um, so I'll turn to board members for, for questions or, or comments and, uh, start with Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, I'd like to move receipt of the, um, report in, uh, and, and, um, yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I especially like the last bullet point on here. And, and my understanding too is that he is on the governor's desk now to, um, sign legislation that will allow all remote, um, access going through the middle of July. I mean, so we have some more time, um, with respect to what's currently, uh, in the current limit, you know, is, is April 1st, uh, does allow, it also allows for, I mean, not only these meetings mean to be remote access, but also for us to do virtual town meeting. So fortunately, the legislature has moved in time so that we're not going to be scrambling, I mean, come, you know, the, in the March. Um, uh, and yeah, I noticed, the survey I thought was excellent. I mean, really good survey, really good questions. I mean, it did seem to me in the survey from what I recall that the hybrid was kind of like the least, um, desirable of, of the respondents. Uh, and so I'm all for pilots, I mean, and so, so we'll learn something from doing the pilot and, and hopefully the pilot will be constructed in a way that we can get a decent sense of how many people from the public actually care to show up in person, uh, versus doing, um, the remote. Uh, hey, I know that when the select board did its hybrid, I thought it was very good to have a select person, you know, in the virtual room to experience what the people who weren't, you know, in the physical room were experiencing. Because, you know, it is different, you know, I found it okay, eh, but certainly on a technical realm, in a technical area, you can have some audio problems and if there isn't someone monitoring what's going on in the virtual room, uh, then you could have, uh, uh, not unequal experience, because it won't be equal, but, but certainly an inadequate experience, but that can be handled by the, the tech. Um, uh, but my biggest criticism, I mean, about this report though, is the, um, if you speculon your first slide is the, the, where we talked, you mentioned the report or the paper, um, by, um, Einstein, um, Palmer, and I forget the third name, it starts with a G, and, um, I have a lot of problems with the paper. I mean, I read the paper, I mean, um, first problem is that eh, especially with its application to what we're dealing with here, is that they are really focused on housing. I mean, all their research is on housing meetings, I mean, and we are dealing with a much broader spectrum. Eh, I deal a lot in the transportation transit world, I mean, and I'd like to see research being that, that we looked at the participation and the type of participation, you know, in that realm. Because you can make the argument that homeowners are a smaller set, I mean, of, of the population. I mean, when you come to transportation, you generally have a broader segment of the population involved. So, so I think before we say we that the hybrid or, or remote, we doesn't increase participation or diversity of participation, we need to broaden it out from research that focuses solely on housing, which is what theirs does. And, and as I read through the paper, eh, to be, there are, I thought in, in certain sections, the conflation of, of concepts, I mean, in order to try to make this point, eh, uh, and some, some outdated sources, I mean, one that talked about the online participation that increasing or online access and that increase, increase participation that was referenced in 1995, I mean, um, almost 30 years ago. So I dare say we're in a different world. Uh, fortunately, uh, the salvation for the paper, I thought, was at the end, be where they say, well, I mean, a lot of this research is based on, on policies that or, or, or projects that were in play, I mean, before the pandemic started. So it might be, uh, an element of, well, we're just kind of playing out, especially in the housing stuff. We, we're playing out engagement based on policies or, or projects, I mean, that were in the pipeline before the pandemic. And it might be different once we get to projects that, that have emerged, I mean, since the online access has started. And they also said that he, we, we might be able to do things or get more participation if we actively, I mean, work on it. So, so I, 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 um, so I don't know to be, the report is what the report is, you know, but I, I, I'm uncomfortable, it's again, with, with the reference of, of the paper there. I, I, if anything, I'd love to have a discussion, uh, with the officers, because I'm making this argument without them there to defend it. But if anyone from your group, eh, um, wants to respond to my, my concerns, I'm all ears, but, um, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Um, Seuss, did you want to say something? And, you know, part of this maybe is, is, is better, um, at, at a separate time, but I want to give you an opportunity to respond to what Mr. Diggins said.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, many of, of Mr. Diggins', uh, criticisms are, are legitimate. Um, in that, um, this paper was only looking at certain types of meetings. Um, we did hear some information, um, from some of the committees that in their experience in Arlington, that their own meetings were, did not have the diversity that they'd hoped. So for example, Park and Rec, um, when they redid the park at Thompson, which is in, you know, in an area with lots of diversity and renters and stuff. Um, they said they, they, they had felt that they tried everything to try to get a wider group of people coming to the meetings and, and weren't successful in it. So I, I, I don't think it, I don't think that the, um, the, what we should get out of this is that is, is impossible to get a diverse representation at meetings in a hybrid or remote setting. I think we should just understand that we still have challenges that are not solved by the hybrid or remote, um, meeting. But that is just not enough, you know, you, you still have to do all the other things that you, we've always needed to do.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I'll, uh, second Mr. Diggins' motion. Um, and I'll say, Mr. Diggins, if we're still on Zoom in July, I think my head might explode. So I, I think we can get on a quicker track than that, particularly since our board is already set up for this. Um, I want to thank the committee for all their work. Um, I think remote participation during the pandemic has been something that emerges as a huge benefit for people to participate in the public, um, comment portions of our meetings, certainly for everyone under the circumstances. And, you know, I, I think going forward, it will, will, all our means will always have an aspect of remote participation. Where I see it, at least for our board, is that we have remote participation for public comment periods, like open forum for when we have hearings and then otherwise we operate just generally like our boards have before, particularly for members, because our meetings just have always worked more efficiently. I've been in meetings before the pandemic and after the pandemic. And when we have meetings in the chamber where we're looking at each, each other, having a discussion, we're looking at people that are addressing concerns to us in the face. I, I always felt like it was a better conversation. So I am looking forward to getting back to that sort of structure where we're all together in the same room. But again, with the caveat that we developed the technologies, so where people want to address the board through. But again, with the caveat that we developed the technologies, so where people want to address the board through open forum or through public hearings that we open up the remote participation portal for that portion of the hearing. Um but it's an ongoing process and we'll we'll look at the feasibility of a lot of the suggestions. I myself have no problem opening up the select board chambers if we're going to make a significant financial investment into just a few locations, I think it is efficient to have as many meetings in each individual location as we can. And I agree with the idea that we need some, such as the Lions Hearing Room, wired up as well, because, you know, it doesn't happen as much in our meetings, but certainly the redevelopment board and the zoning board of appeals have had meetings that have had fifty to a hundred people at the meeting where they have needed access in larger places. So I think that's something that we definitely need to look at. But I mean, I think this is going to be a work in progress and I look forward to the further work of the of the working group and um having discussions with the public and my colleagues about where we go from here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Uh Mrs. Mahan.
Um, thank you and uh thank you for, God bless your meeting every two weeks. Sort of like a select board meeting minus the Warren article, but um one of the things um moving forward in stuff I touched on this is um come July, some of the decisions may be made for us in terms of what it is um we can or cannot do in terms of remote, hybrid or other. Um so I guess if for some reason it's not extended after July, within two to four weeks before that, either the town manager or town council could advise the select board as the, I guess, executive body, executive branch, um whether we're under the current laws or anything else that's applicable. Can we say um this is how, you know, we want to do hybrid, remote, whatever? Um and still not uh run afoul of uh open meeting laws or or anything else or or something would need to be done that the um select board could do that after our discussion. And um the majority, if not um unanimous vote uh from the select board. And I don't want to put town council on the spot, but it might, if I could ask an easy question for you, Mr. Chair, to town council, am I overthinking that? Um or is that something we we need to really look into? If come July, order is not extended, it's not something you can just do uh as the executive body branch?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, uh Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, that that's correct. So right now, the board has authorized remote participation. And under the current law, the board can set more restrictive measures for remote participation, but it can expand remote participation beyond what's allowed under the uh regulations of the open meeting law uh promulgated by the Attorney General's Office. So it'll be important to see what that legislation allows. The only other vehicle that you could uh pursue um to to change that would be special legislation. But, you know, as folks know, generally speaking, they want to have a certain amount of uniformity when it comes to uh uh certain things like um public transparency and stuff like that. So I think you've got it right. We'll need to see what that legislation says, because the default of the open meeting law is much more restrictive than the current uh uh special circumstances that we're in. And it kind of allows you to be more restrictive, but doesn't allow you to be more generous if you think there are certain bodies. There's an important exception with the Disabilities Commission, but I I think you summarized it well.
Okay, and then um since we sort of have an in on MMA, if for some reason it goes to July, does not get extended, I assume other cities and towns will sort of be faced with the same dilemma of go back to all in person or explore something else. So perhaps um our town manager, who's the president MMA or president of something of MMA. I don't know if they started having these discussions or if you anticipate in the future that if it's not extended after July, that either cities and towns individually or through the MMA might have some um combination of speaking with the voice. I can ask Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So I I I am no longer the president of the MMA. I'm just a rank a rank and file member. Uh no, but I am I am aware that they they have been lobbying and advocating quite hard for the extension or not even extension so much as a permanent uh measure to be put in place to allow for, you know, more easily remote, hybrid and in-person meetings. I can check in on the status of their efforts, but I know for quite some time they've been advocating with legislators and the governor's office in that regard.
Okay, and then the only other thing I would say, not that the committee doesn't have enough on its plate or its platter or whatever receptacle is appropriate to make the analogy to is, you know, I I was looking at the respondents and in, you know, sixty-four, sixty-four uh boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. Um and I know, I think, under hybrid, I think the highest respondents was like twenty-eight to thirty-eight percent. One of the things, and and if it's in here, I missed it, I apologize, but um if they could just be a straight out um survey of the sixty-eight entities that you all have identified, um if they can be given, I guess, three options. If after no extension after July, what would that committee prefer or be leaning towards? Maybe not ask them to make a definitive, but what would they see they'd be leaning towards? Go back to in-person only um remote by certain members or somebody else or three hybrid. And and maybe there's a fourth question. So my thing is before we uh talk about um, you know, what spaces we do have currently set up to do remote hybrid. Um if we do expand them and it is a cost, and I know that I'm always along with the chair and others, bringing in, you know, the override and long-range planning committee. Uh we've really been given the charge and the steed to um really buckle down and and look at every little expense. And, you know, the pennies, nickels and dimes add up to a dollar also. Um I I might, right now, if I had my druthers, I'd say perhaps look at the um O'Neill Community Room over at the community center police department, which is probably quasi setup, not totally. Um but my thing is of the sixty-four, if it comes back that only twelve, you know, not counting school committee and select board, because we are where we are, um then that may determine um if there's any further need to do that investment. Um so I've just put that out there just to kind of ruminate, because I know this is just an interim report. We'll go forward. More things will be decided by July. Um and I look forward to somehow finding out, um once we know what the parameters are, the best way we can um deliver the services. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. Uh thanks to my colleagues on the board and my colleagues on the committee. I have to say, the members have worked really hard and much and uh, you know, it's it's been an interesting work. It's been a good discussion and I'd like to offer perspective of somebody who's been alongside this committee uh on a couple of points. Yeah, one one of them is, I think with respect to the research that Mr. Diggins engaged with, um the weaknesses are absolutely legitimate and were also acknowledged by the researchers um when they when they spoke with us, the limitations, I should say, of of the applicability. Uh but I do appreciate Ms. Seuss drawing out what we did here, surprising to surprising degree. And I don't think there's a fundamental conflict here. The consensus of the remote committee is very pro remote access. Make no mistake about that. Uh this re- research notwithstanding, I think the illuminating point for me in this research is that allowing remote access does may not automatically or inherently bring greater representation. And I think it's important to know that, because that suggests a course of action, that if that's the case, um and we and we see some qualitative evidence or suggestions of that, even talking with their own committees, uh we are going to need to do more than just set the technology up. Um we will, we will need to really work on outreach and I appreciate uh Mustafa saying uh, you know, this doesn't necessarily just dump us on the DEI coordinator. This probably needs to be something that's more infused throughout our government, uh an ethos of of civic engagement um and and in bringing people in and helping them believe that this increased access is for them too. Um the the second thing I would say just about costs, because that's that's absolutely the right question, uh we've looked a lot at this. And this board and the town manager will have to make some decisions, but uh these kinds of expenses are directly eligible for ARPA funds. Um CARES Act probably covers some of them, some of them, there's that. And I know Mr. Feeney and his his infinite skill has been creatively applying for grants uh from sort of the disability access into this. The the committee is actually not, at this point, I don't think we we believe that this would necessarily incur um general operating budget uh impacts i- it with the consideration of ARPA particularly, um which in other communities are using ARPA and they use CARES Act funding to set this up. And part of the purpose of that is to not only accommodate public health, this public health situation with remote access to public meetings, but also with contemplate sort of some future proofing for, you know, where this pandemic or other epidemics may may get us. Um but but the cost is certainly something that we will need to further investigate after we get a sense from this board. Um another point that that came up, I think, was um what happens after July? If the legis- if the governor and the legislature do agree that all remote access goes through July, um we still can deploy hybrid remote access without any change in the law. Um our understanding of that, that um a a majority quorum of the body has to be physically present. So it would have to be some people in the room and, you know, but any any participants who aren't on the board or commission can be remote and probably a subquorum of of members could be re- uh could be remote, just as we did, um you know, in 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 the select board chambers. So I say that because um I'd like to suggest a friendly amendment to Mr. Diggins' motion um that we not only receive this, but we actually start moving on on um looking into doing the pilot. Because I think this is, one thing we we learned is this is complex enough um that trying to roll this out to sixty boards and commissions at once is not at all feasible. We want to roll this out to a small number of groups that are interested and the public is interested in seeing, learn from that. Um because there will be some hiccups, you know, and and get some insight in into the technology, into the budgeting and all this, into the staffing that that may be required, a lot of questions. So do this in a pilot, try to do that in the second half of this year um and then see where we're at. So I I would uh with Mr. Diggins' consent, he can speak to this after I after I'm done um with with my talking. But suggest that we move receipt and also refer to the town manager to study uh budget and implementation considerations from this report and then return to this board uh with recommendations for further discussion um r- relating to implementing um a pilot study this year. And um and the last thing I'll say is um, so I attended it, speaking of the MMA. And by the way, Mr. Chaplin was miss- was mistaken. He is not just an ordinary member. He is immediate past president. It says so on the website. So there you go. Um but I I attended an MMA webinar on this very topic a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that was really resonated with me, and I think we should pay attention to, is that our constituents expect a digital-first experience with everything in their lives. And their government is not an exception. And I'm enough of a traditionalist. I I don't personally want to contemplate a world where we do everything digitally. And I I know I I there may be some difference of opinion on this board about that. But but I think that from the residents' point of view, participation in the government, that, you know, we have all moved to all remote and I think a lot of people have been surprised and even pleasantly surprised at about how much easier it is uh to be involved in the government in in public meetings. So I think that we would do wise to take this opportunity with maybe some funding from ARPA, from CARES, whatever, um and the opportunity to hardworking people on this committee to start moving um and get ready to and and get ready to roll this out, because I think our public is going to expect it. And if, you know, and and um once we're back to meeting in person, it's going to be a a a change for some people, and not just the public, but there will be some members of boards and commissions who have realized that they enables their public service if they're able to use these tools. Um so this is, you know, not just a pandemic response. I think that we are in a good way stuck with this. Um and so I would encourage us to just seize that leadership mantle and and anticipate uh what our constituents and our and our residents and volunteers will be wanting. So um anyway, and I I know that was a long spiel, there was a a friendly amendment buried in that and also a friendly shot at my friend who made made the uh made the proposal. So I'll 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 shush and let the chairs sort it out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mr. Diggins, is that acceptable for a a friendly amendment to?
Uh yes, it is. And then a- after um you you talk this chair, me I I have a a question and then one short comment. It's okay.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I just have a couple of comments. And I also want to thank the committee for all their hard work. Mr. Helmuth has kept me up to date from time to time in terms of what's been going on. I know you've been doing quite a bit. I did answer one of your survey questions and and I certainly um on on your rank recommendations certainly would encourage and support hybrid participation for committees going forward. I mean, we 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 saw that it 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 works with the with the public. And would I prefer that all five of us were in the select board chambers tonight? Absolutely. But if we were, I certainly would want to allow for um remote participation as part of our meetings. Um just a question on, you had identified different rooms that could be equipped for future hybrid uses. But the range of costs there were, and I know these are estimates, was from three thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I imagine the Lions Hearing Room might be then on the higher end of that. But are there some room, or maybe maybe not, I just I see it shaking your head. But are there some rooms that are, you you think will be easier at the lower end, that maybe we could get going on sooner rather than later?
Um, well, I can give a very short answer, but then I'd like to ask Alex to maybe give a little bit more details. But there are um technologies that would work well for five people sitting around the table, for example. Now, Alex, I don't know if you want to go into some more details on that.
I I second that. I'd say it's less about the room itself and more about the meeting that you're trying to accommodate and make remote. And then if we're talking about a meeting with five people and a single remote person and uh new materials to present, that's a lot cheaper to accommodate than something, say, like the ARB, where you might want two screens more than a, you know, a couple of cameras, have a significant number of people in the audience and remote. Um and then on top of that, which room are you in? So so it's kind of a two-part thing.
Okay, all right. And 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 just a comment, I I do think you you make a really good point there. There are some committees that we found here um that remote may be the best way to go um a- as we go forward and and, you know, seen that with some of the committees that I'm a liaison to smaller that I I think it might be preferable. So I'm glad you're you're looking into that as as a potential um recommendation uh as as we go forward on that. So um, Mr. Diggins, did you want to add add something further?
Yeah, so so a a quick question, me and and perhaps this to one of the members of the um committee or or to to us. Me, I mean, that is that um are, was there any exploration of for the meetings that are hybrid and recording them and then making them available eh um uh on YouTube or something um later on? Because I think that's one good element, me of of the use of this technology, is that everything can be recorded easily.
That was definitely part of the, um that was the public survey question. Um I don't remember the exact answer, but basically I think it was the middle answer in terms of people would prefer that it be recorded and be available for some considerable amount of time, but it didn't seem like forever. Um and we've heard um um and Alex or Jennifer can can correct me, but basically, you know, video takes up a lot of room and the town has a lot of meetings that go for a lot of time. So even though storage is cheap, it does add up. Um so there was some con- um discussion around the costs and we don't have answers. We don't have specific estimates or anything, but um definitely people would like the, people would, people want the idea of the recordings. It wasn't clear how many people would use the recordings. That that was to to be to be quite honest about all this. Um, you know, I'm not sure, um but I think for the sake of record, it would be very nice to have the recordings when people do want to go back and see them. One gauge is how many people watch the ACMI YouTube videos. And it's not a big number, but I'm sure for those that watched it, it was important. So um, I don't know if there's other answers.
I mean, I think maybe Ms. Seuss, did you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought I saw Ms. Seuss raise her hand. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it so I think there's one question about whether, in terms of cost, whether a meeting was recorded and available to the public for a certain length of time, whereas being recorded and sort of shoved someplace so that so somebody asked, you could bring, give it to them. Um and I think that the former was a lot more expensive, is what we understood. So there could be a hybrid approach um in terms of storing and making meetings. there could be a hybrid approach in terms of storing and making meetings available. And I, I definitely think that this should be part of what the pilot is, is studying and trying to learn from.
And so, so then a quick comment based on this and a question to, to Mr. Heim. You know, I mean, I'll say that the, I wouldn't expect to be that people would watch the entire video, that they would just go in for the information that they need, you know, see it and then, and then, and then, you know, leave, you know. And so the question was to Heim is, would there be any problem, any legal problem with us putting these recorded videos on YouTube? Thereby bypassing the whole cost issue?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Attorney Heim.
There's, there's a very high level question. It's not actually just limited to YouTube. It's about what happens when the government utilizes private vendors to upload content. You don't own that content. So that's an interesting question. It doesn't, something is limited to this. We're not necessarily in control of that content. YouTube is very convenient for a number of reasons. It's hard to project what a technology like that or a platform like that would be like ten years from now. I, I don't see an immediate legal problem. It doesn't, uploading something onto YouTube doesn't obviate us from having to comply with keeping meeting minutes and other things like that. It's just another way to capture the same type of thing. So my answer is, i- in the short run, not, it's not a legal acute problem. In the long run, it's sort of a interesting question about how to handle not just YouTube, but other, other platforms, including social media.
And my final comment is kind of based on what Mr. Helmut said towards the end. And that is, I don't think we can capture this or study this in the pilot, but I think we need to be concerned about the possibility that, that people, you know, who like remote will gravitate towards the opportunities that provide that. And so there's only so much time in a day to meet and, and, and those of us who like trying to do a lot or going to, you know, gravitate towards groups that allow us to do that. And so you may find me that you get a different kind of distribution in participants because you don't offer the remote capability. So just something to keep in mind. I don't know if you can try to design a pilot and see if you can capture that because right now we're in a world that's kind of all remote. And we haven't gone into a world where, where people can do whatever, like maybe government is limited towards hybrid or, or only in person and then non-government can do what it wants. So one more reason for us to lobby to make sure that we, we provide more access. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Okay. Again, thank you again, each one of you for all the work that you're doing on the, on the committee. And we look forward to more reporting and, and from you as we go forward. So on a motion by Mr. Diggins as amended by Mr. Helmut to receive the report and refer to the town manager for a review of budget implications of a pilot program, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and I wasn't paying attention. I heard Mr. Diggins. Who seconded that?
So Mr. Diggins' motion originally was seconded by Mr. Hurd. And then Mr. Helmut offered an amendment that I took Mr. Diggins' acceptance of it as a second.
Thank you. Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Item twelve this evening. And then one thing I will say, I thought we had seventeen topics of interest tonight, but I know people will come and go during during these meetings. It's just a joke on the survey results there. Item twelve, ARPA investment in affordable housing. Request from Housing Corporation of Arlington, Jennifer Rake, Director of the Department of Planning and Community Development. Is Ms. Rake, she had a meeting tonight. I don't know if she's able to.
Yeah, so if, if it pleases the boy, Ms. Rake's at the redevelopment board tonight. So we discussed this matter before the meeting and frankly, given the uncertainty of when it would come up on the agenda, we agreed that I would present this to the board. So this is a matter that was brought to us by the Housing Corporation of Arlington after they had previously sought funding from the Community Preservation Act or from the Community Preservation Committee to basically close out the Downing Square Broadway initiative. So I know a number of us were at the ribbon cutting several months ago. They are getting very close to lease up. Now, I did reach out to the executive director, interim executive director of the HCA today. I believe they have one tenant under agreement with a series of other tenants, hopefully soon to be under agreement to be leasing up. But with all that said, there were a number of factors that led to the project having a budget shortfall when all was said and done. It was a combination of factors, some driven by site remediation costs going over budget, some construction costs going over budget and a series of other factors. The CPA committee ultimately decided that funding a retrospective project wasn't the best and most appropriate use of CPA funds. And actually, I believe the chair of the CPA recommended that they talk with me and then ultimately the select board about potentially using some ARPA funds to help them close out the project. As is delineated in the memorandum that was provided to the board, they have gone to a number of other sources to help them close out. They've received funding from the North Suburban Consortium, some funds from DHCD. And they came to us, they ultimately said, we still have a six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar shortfall to close. Would the town be willing to help with some funding source? Most likely ARPA. And myself and Ms. Rake had a discussion with both members of the board and the interim executive director of the Housing Corporation. And at that point said, if, if we are able to say three hundred and nineteen thousand, half of the six thirty-eight, could you go back to DHCD and see if they would cover that other half, the other fifty percent? And they said that they think that would likely have a positive outcome and they would do it. And amazingly enough, the next day, DHCD responded saying that they would fund that portion if the town did affirmatively fund this three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar amount. So I would recommend that the board endorse this expenditure of ARPA funds. It helps close out this important project in town and helps the HCA be able to both lease up and move on to whatever its next project may be in town. And I would recommend that we take it out of the line that has not yet been fully endorsed in terms of details of affordable, affordable housing unit production. Which of course would make less dollars available for future production, but helps close out this project and, and, you know, get, get these apartments filled and again, help the HCA move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I'm very happy to move approval. And, and I want to express my appreciation for Mr. Chaplin, not only to contemplate this, but for his really skillful work in, in getting the state to cover half, half of this need. I think that's, you know, that's pretty extraordinary and just speaks to, I mean, we're, we're very used to this high level of, of stewardship from the town, but it's always appreciated. And I think in the service of helping HCA, it's, it's especially valuable. Yeah, and I, I have no problem doing this with the, with the ARPA adjustment. I think that you know, HCA is a viable organization that will produce future housing units. So I think, you know, I, I have no problem doing that because I think that, yeah, we are, we're assisting them with the very, very recent production of using housing. And it was, I was delighted to be at the ribbon cutting and to tour the units. They are fantastic. I mean, there's a lot of them. So it's helping people live in our community. It's helping us with, with our progress towards, say, harbor status someday with forty B. And I think the HCA will continue to do that. And as these funds will, you know, will, will make it possible for them to make sure they can move forward on a safe footing.
And thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
I will certainly second Mr. Helmut's motion to move approval to endorse. Because this is opera funding and the way I understand this, and I may come out negative, but I'm saying it as a positive that ultimately the decision under the US Treasury guidelines is the, the case of Arlington with our town manager. But instead of him just making that decision, he's done as he's done with other facets of the opera funding. He's come to the board and, and asked for our endorsement and recommendation. And I just want to double check with, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chaplin, that, that's the case of what we're doing again here tonight.
Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mrs. Mahan, that, absolutely. And my plan going forward would continue to be every, every ARPA program that's yet to be endorsed, I would want to bring back before the board as in order to create both board input, but a public process for the expenditure of the funds.
And, and thank you. And I honestly am highlighting that in a positive way, that while the law, if you go strictly to the letter of the law, it is the town manager. Him in this case, in the future someday, ten, twenty years down the road, perhaps hers. But I do appreciate the fact that Mr. Chaplin, as he's done in the past and is continuing to do, is not just unilaterally making decisions, which would be his right to do, but is really continuing to foster not just the relationship with the board to come back and, and get our input and recommendations, but also as an extension to the public at large that these decisions are not made in a vacuum, which they could be, but the town manager is endeavoring to not only involve myself and my colleagues, but also to get the information out as widely in a forum as he can. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to second Mr. Helmut's motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to support this. I think this is a really important project for Arlington, but it's also the type of project that fits kind of squarely in the allowance that we set aside to commit the ARPA funds to more increase, to increase affordable housing units in town. So I think this is the perfect example of how we should spend those monies for that purpose. So happy to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I'm happy to support it too. And, and I was wondering why the CPA didn't approve. And I understand their rationale, so that makes me even more comfortable moving forward. And I really am thrilled with the collaboration. I mean, in the region, the North Suburban Consortium, throwing in a hundred K, I mean, that, that just makes me feel good about regional support for housing and of course, estate stepping in with three hundred and nineteen K. So all around, just a good good effort by, by, by the residents and the leaders in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. And I'm, I'm happy to support this as well. And, and for us, as Mr. Chaplin said, approving three hundred and nineteen thousand, it's essentially a match from, from DHCD on, on three hundred and nineteen thousand. So this is forty-eight units of affordable housing that we want to see filled as quickly as possible. And I, and I think this will help HCA do that. And also will probably help Arlington Eats move into the Broadway location because there may be a relationship there in terms of when the work is done. We certainly want to see that happening as soon as possible. So on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes. Thank you. Item thirteen, review and approve select board goals. Mr. Chaplin had sent us the revisions to the goals, but I would turn it to him for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the hour, I, I think I would suffice to say that I, I have updated the goals document as provided to the board. Per the discussion we had at the close of last calendar year. I think I captured everything that was discussed in the meeting. This very, very much chance that I didn't fully capture anything. So I'd be open to answering any questions, making any additions or revisions, or if it suits the board tonight. Approving these goals would also be fine. Then we can build them into the budget documents going forward as well.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Mrs. Mahan?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went to the select board's office. They printed out, out the oh, the goals and they're sitting downstairs in an envelope. So I don't want to run away. I did go through them while I was in the office very quickly. And I do want to thank the town manager and the chair for sort of, I don't want to say backfilling, but as both said, they would do around the airlife CSO issue. Putting language in there. I read it this morning. And I started to think about adding different things, whether it's, you know, NIP, well, I think NIPD is in there, but you know, DEP, EPA. But then I reread it again and it's, it's broad enough and general enough that I think if I get into any specifics, it would limit it. So I, I think we have an appropriate placeholder in there for that. And I know that the chair and the town manager on that issue are also working with the time frameworks we have before us. So I would move to approve the select board goals as compiled, compiled by the chair and the town manager. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I'm Mr. Hurd.
I'll second that motion and look forward to acting on our goals.
Uh, Mr. Diggins?
Thank you. I'm happy to support it. Maybe just add, you know, putting Mr. Hurd's head back together when it explodes, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mr. Helmut.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to support it as well. And thank you to the town manager who did the primary work, putting, putting this together following our meeting. So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim.
Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and I apologize for not muting myself. My clearing of the throat was not any symbol of message. It was my blood pressure medicine kicking in. So, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Chairman, so.
Okay, thank you. Item fourteen, update and discussion, Mughar. And I was going to turn it over to Attorney Heim for a brief overview in terms of what has happened. I think the last time we talked about this, the ZBA had issued their decision. The Butters surrounding the Mughar site have filed an appeal in the Superior Court. The applicant Oak Tree has filed an appeal in the Housing Appeals Committee. So Attorney Heim, if you could just give us a little bit of information on the procedural posture. And I have a few comments and maybe some potential action items or discussion as far as where we, we go as a board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief. Just to sort of recap, this all stems from an August thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen application by Arlington Land Realty for a comprehensive permit. The site known as the Mughar Woods build a forty B apartment complex and a series of townhouses. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the ZBA issued their decision on that. That decision by the ZBA was appealed by Arlington Land Realty. And I'm going to summarize this a little bit based on really two grounds. One, that certain conditions in that decision rendered the project uneconomic. And secondly, that it was outside, some conditions were outside the scope of forty B. Around the same time, Butters appealed as well. They appealed to our Superior Court. And their basis in very, very short summary is basically that some of the, the decision itself was faulty and that there was some information that the decision lacked that it should have had before rendering it. What happens when you have two appeals essentially simultaneously from Butters and from an applicant? Is the applicant's appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee takes precedent. So the Superior Court action under chapter forty A by the Butters has essentially stayed while the Housing Appeals Committee's examination of the applicant Arlington Land Realty's arguments are assessed. The Butters also filed a motion to intervene in that action. So they're essentially joining it. The current, the most current update on that action is that the HAC wanted the parties to engage in sort of a mediation to see if the issues could be resolved. The ZBA took the position that they were interested in that, only if the Butters were also going to be a part of that mediation. Because that's the only way that there would be some sort of final resolution to the inherent disputes involved. I'm not sure that that mediation is going to happen. It's not a hundred percent clear to me. But obviously, if there was some resolution that was mutually satisfactory to Butters, ZBA and by association, the town and the applicant, then that would resolve the matter. Absent that, however, I think we're probably looking at anywhere from a year to eighteen months for an HAC decision to be litigated. And how that primarily happens is by prefiled testimony. But after that, assuming that the HAC decision is either in favor of the applicants or the ZBA, it doesn't really assuming that the HAC decision is either in favor of the applicants or the ZBA, it doesn't really matter. The Butters suit would then proceed in Superior Court, which I would expect to be another 12 to 18 months, maybe more than that. So just to give a timeframe for all of this, we're probably looking at about three years at the earliest before this matter would be resolved if it was litigated to its end conclusion. Obviously, in the meantime, there's a number of things to be thought about by the ZBA, by this board. I did speak with special counsel Attorney Witten in advance of this meeting. He'd be happy to meet with the entirety of the board in an executive session to provide a attorney-client communication essentially about the status of the case. And of course, I'm at the ready to do that as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, if that's a satisfactory sort of base rundown of the posture, I'll look forward to any discussion from the board.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hein. And I just have a few comments before I open it up to board members. And I just want to elaborate a little bit on what Attorney Hein said. And Mrs. Mahan and I had had a meeting recently with Attorney Hein and Mr. Chapdaling regarding concerns about conservation issues with the parcel and the decision itself. And one thing, again, we weren't a party to the matter. The ZBA issued its decision and they issued, put in place several conditions on the site, post-approval conditions. And one of them I'm going to refer to and talk about a little bit, but maybe suggest to the board that we do take up Attorney Witten's offer to meet with him in executive session concerns, conditions that happen after the fact. And one of those conditions is to test the groundwater elevation at the site. And there are other conditions that were put in there as well in terms of the applicant funding a cleanup of the site before they do any work on the conservation, so-called conservation parcel. And also put money into escrow to allow the town or a organization to clean up the site and restore the conservation area there. The applicant filed its appeal and essentially objected to all of the conditions and any condition that was post-decision. And that would include a testing requirement, which they had agreed to. It would include their funding the cleanup. Now, they may come back and say they were arguing in the alternative, but we've got to take their appeal for what's written on it. And they made very general objections to the entire decision. Then they made some specific objections to various conditions. And I think for us, we've been going through this as a town for a number of years. There are significant environmental concerns on that site and environmental concerns that do have to do with groundwater flooding, localized flooding, and stream flooding. And to have the applicant say they were going to do something and now see them filing an action to the Housing Appeals Committee challenging conditions, I find very disappointing. And I was going to go into a little bit more detail on this conservation testing issue. But after talking to Attorney Hein, I think it's best in hearing the offer that we received tonight. I think it's best for the board to have that session with Attorney Witten to talk about options and talk about where things stand on that issue. The second thing I want to say, and this has to do with the additional land there that the site proposed for development, I'm going to round, is between five and six acres. That leaves about 12 acres that would be known as the conservation parcel. And there was a requirement for Oak Tree or the applicant to fund a cleanup before any part of that parcel is transferred, whether it be through a conservation restriction or whether it be transferred to the town. Now, they are within their appeal, challenging in a general way, even that condition. And my feeling on that is, and the town manager had sent a memo or letter to the ZBA back in March of 2021 in terms of what conditions the town would like to see if there ever was to be a transfer of the open space parcel. And one of those conditions was that the site would be cleaned up. So if the applicant is now taking the position through their pleadings that they are going to challenge this decision, I think it behooves us as a town or as a board to reach out to members of the Conservation Commission to see what the extent of their authority is for potential enforcement actions. Because why should we wait to see what happens with this appeal? If they don't want to work with us, and this has been held off before, and there's been discussions. But again, going to take them for what's in their pleadings. If this is the route that they want to go down, I think we as a board should be talking to the Conservation Commission, whether it be a smaller group of the board or whether it be at a full meeting to say, what are the actions the Conservation Commission can take? One, to see what type of compliance there is on the site since the cleanup and whether any further enforcement action is necessary. So I'd like to highlight that right now for the board, but also suggest that if we could reach some consensus for a future meeting to meet with council to talk about some of these other sensitive issues relating to the appeals and to the environmental conditions. So with that, I will go in the same order as the last item. Mrs. Mahan and I had met on this issue, so I'm going to start with her for any further comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you've definitely encapsulated anything that I would say at a public meeting. And I definitely want to hear from my colleagues on the board. But I think a good next step, as you have suggested, and Attorney Hein is the executive session with our co-counsel Attorney Witten. Because I really don't want to go into discussing possible legal I don't want to say machinations, but legal avenues that this board could explore. Because that's definitely more befitting for the executive session. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'd be interested in hearing from my, as you are, from my other three colleagues about readjourning this in an executive session with Attorney William, Attorney Witten, Hein, and the town manager. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the update. Yeah, I agree. I think from this board's perspective, as far as our next steps and the strategies that we can take to fight the project, the best avenues to first meet with Attorney Witten. And we can have those discussions and kind of formulate our plan from there. So I agree with that, and I support going down that road. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I supported. And I definitely would like to have the executive session. It'll give me time to go back and watch the recording of what you just said. That was quite the explanation. And then I need to review it because there's a lot there. And I'll learn a lot more in the executive session. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. Yeah, I strongly concur with the Chair's line of argument and proposed action.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Attorney Hein, did you want to add anything further? Or I don't know if that's, I mean, we will, we can coordinate. And I think we have a consensus. We don't necessarily need a vote. I will schedule an executive session and coordinate with Attorney Hein. But I don't know if you wanted to add anything further on this.
I think the board's stated well what its concerns and motivations are for wanting to talk about this further. So especially given the hour, I think I'm almost at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hein. So I will move on to the next items on our agenda, which is correspondence received. I'm going to take them all in order and then ask for action from the board. Item 15, a request for crosswalk on Mass Ave, Alexander Finley, 1490 Mass Ave. Item 16, return of community events, Elizabeth Locke, Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. And item 17, comments regarding overnight parking pilot program, Steve Revellak, 111 Sunnyside Ave. Mr. Hurd?
So I will move to refer item 1 and 3 to the town manager. I don't know if he has any opinion as to whether or not he can handle that through his office or whether we should refer those to TAC.
Mr. Chapdaling?
Well, I think on one, I can at least start with the senior transportation planner, Mr. Amstutz, in drafting a response as a preliminary response.
Yeah. And then move receipt of item number two.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Diggins?
I will second that, but I'm inclined to make a friendly amendment that me, three, we go to well, the chair and myself have received it, but it seems like it's referring more to that pilot. And we're working on that. Of course, in concert with you all, to the extent open meeting allows me and the town manager. But I think it would really go to us, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Yeah. Second that, or it needs to be, and happy to support that. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Mahan?
Did Mr. Diggins second that or Mr. Helmuth?
Diggins seconded Mr. Hurd's motion, and his front amendment was seconded by Mr. Helmuth.
So I just have it down, Mr. Hurd. And there's a reason I'm doing this. There's been power outage all over town. Mr. Hurd moved receipt of correspondence received, refer to the town manager, number 15, and number 17. Thank you. All set.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I have no further comments on that. So on a motion originally by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hein?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Attorney Hein?
No new business. Thank you.
Mr. Chapdaling?
Two pieces of new business. One, I wanted to share with the board that I've had a series of meetings with town council, the moderator and assistant moderator, the town clerk, and the director of Health and Human Services to begin talking about town meeting preparation for this year. And the short version is that we are going to plan on parallel tracks for both an in-person town meeting and/or a virtual town meeting. Given the uncertainty of both the trajectory of the virus as well as an uncertainty about what statutory allowances we'll have at that time, we thought it was most prudent to plan for both. If we do meet live, the current thought for in-person would be to have town meeting take place either in the red gym at the high school or potentially in the new auditorium. As both of those options would provide more space for people than the town hall would. So I think this will be an ongoing matter, obviously, that we work on over the course of the next few months leading up to town meeting. But I did want to share with the board, the public, what our preliminary thinking and planning efforts would be focused on. The next matter, and I'm sure this might be a theme for our new business, is I just wanted to thank the whole team at DPW for back-to-back challenging storms. Very different in their condition, very much the same in the level of work and the number of hours that crews had to put in. The DPW team did a great job tackling over 20 inches of snow in Arlington a little over a week ago. And then with only an inch or two of ice and muck and sleet, had to work for the same amount of time and equally did a very good job keeping the road safe and residents as safe as possible. So I just wanted to give a public thanks to those teams who have worked a lot of hours over the past week tackling winter in New England.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdaling. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. No new business, but I would like to heartily second everything Mr. Chapdaling just said about our DPW crews' hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mr. Diggins?
No new business. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
No new business other than to also just want to thank the DPW. There was some concern over whether or not our Saturday hockey games were canceled, which was a big hit to me as a crazy hockey dad. But there was concern whether we'd have any Sunday hockey games into the work of people like our wonderful DPW. We did have Sunday hockey games, so I was able to calm down a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mrs. Mahan?
Two items on the town manager's report regarding town meeting. Definitely would be, will be interested in that and would assume that if we did do it at the high school, in the auditorium. I haven't checked lately. I'm assuming the elevators, if they're not already functioning, they will be by then. For those that can't do the stairs. And then regarding the warrant amendment over the Department of Public Works, I've been posting every day from, I always do it from a different town, Facebook pages and the like. But as most people know, and we all know, it wasn't just the actual storm itself, but it's been the storm cleanup. And even as recently as yesterday, last night, you know, and I've been through other cities and towns, not only getting Mass Ave curb to curb so you can park, but I lived near the Audiston Middle School and getting those snow mounds and making sure that the ramps, whether you're in a stroller or you're physically handicapped and you need those, as well as I made my runs down the other schools. They really pushed back those corners and made it accessible for anybody that really can't be climbing mounds of snow. So I spoke briefly to the town manager, and I'll sort of hit you all up later in terms of maybe doing a DiAgostino's sort of early dinner or lunch thing that we can all chip in for. Because we can use town funds for that, but just to sort of thank you. You know, didn't want to do it while they're out there, you know, working, getting all the stuff done and probably have 15, 20 minutes for break. But I'd like to do something with you all, just so there's a food thank you to all of them. And I just want to ask the Chair, am I correct? Do we have an executive session tonight?
We do.
We do. Okay, no further new business.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I also want to echo my colleagues thanking the DPW for the great work that they did. These were long-duration storms and really really took a lot to clear the streets, and they did a great job. And also, the town continues to put some great pictures on the website of the DPW in action. And there's actually a short film that I saw that was really impressive as well. So thank you. So that will conclude new business. As I just mentioned, we do have an executive session, which is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And the specific item is the approval of executive session minutes of January 10, 2022. Could I have a motion to go into executive session? Mrs. Mahan?
It's so moved, and I just want to double check. When we come out, is it for the purposes to adjourn or is it to come back out into public session as a result of any action where you may take an executive session regarding the minutes?
Just to adjourn.
Okay, so move to go into executive session when we come out of the executive session for the purposes to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to a second?
Second.
Second.
The motion's made by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, Attorney Hein.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive session.
Okay, and if I could ask if there are any participants who were watching through Zoom, if they could log off at this time, and then once that is clear, we will begin the executive session.